Okay, good evening. Before we start tonight's meeting, I'd like to welcome Tarif Seab from Hazma Islamic Center in Alpharetta who will lead us in invocation.
Hey, I think it's in favor of everybody here.
Excuse me, sir.
If you believe that Dooley is Dooley represents and that these Christians are here tonight in this mosque on the service of God.
Excuse me, sir, I think that's enough.
In the name of God, most generous, most merciful, all praise be to God. We bow our heads to Him, submitting to His will.
worship in Him and only Him, oh God. We thank You for all the blessings You bestowed upon us. We are humbled by Your generosity in spite of our sins. Please guide us to Your righteous path. Give us the wisdom to recognize it and the courage to follow its path. Oh God, please bring peace to this troubled world and allow us to overcome our fears and anxieties, our prejudices and differences. Let us come together in Thy name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, November fifteenth, two thousand and ten, to order. Since our clerk, Sudi, is home ill tonight, Chris is going to fill in, so will our --
So here we go.
City Clerk, please call the roll and make general announcements.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and Councils. I'd be happy to call roll for the November fifteenth, two thousand and ten, regular meeting. However, I'd like to remind those in attendance, please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearings or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. This call to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk's staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. When you hear the bell, you'll have thirty seconds to complete your remarks. City Council may allow public comment in either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided however that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood?
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman?
Here.
Councilmember Julie Zoner Bailey is on her way. Councilmember Bill Lusk?
Here.
Councilmember Burke Hewitt?
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria?
Here.
Councilmember Alan Tard?
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, and I apologize for the outburst a minute ago. It's great to see this room full. We haven't had a packed room like this in quite a while. I didn't realize so many people were interested in the comp plan. Anyways, if the city clerk would please sound the next item.
Mayor, the next item is approval of a meeting, of the meeting agenda. It's agenda item number ten dash one-two-eight-three. Staff would like to defer the proclamation recognizing Hunt Tosh, which is under reports and presentations for the December sixth meeting.
Okay, and I believe Bill's got an addition.
I'd like to add an item to reports and presentations.
Good enough, thank you.
Okay, no other items to be considered, do I have a motion and a second?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting agenda as recommended by staff.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, next item is going to be public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during tonight's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must first complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes for remarks. And just so everybody knows, this is public comment on just general items, not on specific items for tonight, so do we have any public comment?
We don't have any general public comment.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The clerk, please sound the consent agenda items.
First item is approval of the October eighteenth, two thousand and ten, regular council meeting minutes. It's agenda item number ten dash ten, uh, dash twelve-eight-four. Second item is approval of the November first, two thousand and ten, regular council meeting minutes, agenda item number ten dash twelve-eight-five.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second?
May I approve the consent agenda items?
Second motion.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Tard, second by Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Let's move on to reports and presentations. The city clerk, please sound those items.
Mayor, the first item was deferred. We'll move to the second, the proclamation recognizing geographic information systems day.
Okay. To read this proclamation and then I want to present it to Nico Deck. This proclamation is for geographic information systems, or GIS day. Whereas employees of the city of Milton, Georgia, recognize that an understanding of geospatial concepts is crucial to the wise use of natural resources, continued economic prosperity, and general health of the citizens of Milton. And whereas, related technologies have an important role in the future growth and security of our city, including the use, management, and exchange of data from geographic information systems. And whereas, computerized geographic information system technology provides an efficient and effective means for managing geographical information, whereas there is a need to promote GIS awareness, education, and technical training among various groups to most appropriately and wisely use this rapidly emerging technology. And whereas, there is a need to coordinate these efforts to eliminate duplication, reduce costs, develop standards, and to facilitate the sharing and interchange of GIS data, methods, and knowledge. And whereas, it is recognized, in recognizing the importance of geographic awareness to the community, the city of Milton, Georgia, is committed to expanding geographical information systems to the general public in order to implement practical, real-world applications with GIS. Now therefore, I, Joe Lockwood, as mayor of the city of Milton, proclaim November seventeenth, two thousand and ten, as geographical information systems, or GIS, day in the city of Milton, given under our hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on the fifteenth day of November, two thousand and ten. And I'd like to ask Mr. O'Dea to come forward and present this proclamation.
And if the council would like to join me.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Let me do that one. No, two.
I will, Mayor. Edit my motion and vote is a, is a presentation by Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Thank you. Back in August of this year, our Parks and Recreation Director, Cindy Benacci, decided to nominate a few marketing pieces created for her department by Communications Director Jason Wright for the two thousand and ten Georgia Recreation and Park Association Annual Visibility and Marketing Award. The awards are based on agency population and categorized as single event or multi-event publications. By overwhelming vote, the marketing piece entitled Remember to Remember, created by Jason for the two thousand and ten Memorial Day Ceremony, was chosen as the winner. This marketing design was used in newspaper ads, posters, and the ceremony program. The award was presented to Cindy at the GRPA State Conference on Jekyll Island on November third and marks the first state award received by the department. This award would not have been possible without the hard work and creativity Jason put into this design. I would like to thank Jason for all of his efforts in creating this design to increase awareness and participation for our annual Memorial Day Ceremony. Not only do we recognize Jason's talents here in the city of Milton, but they are now recognized statewide. Congratulations to the Parks and Recreation Department and to Jason for this award. If you want to go down the front, you can present this to him. And also to Jason.
You ever trust Cindy again?
Yeah, I told a little mom.
Oh, yeah, Jason, where's your camera?
Yeah, he's going to transfer it.
One, two.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you know. I'm going to go first.
Ready?
I guess.
No, it's not going.
All right.
I'm good.
One more.
Yeah.
One, two, three.
All right.
Thanks, Jason.
Congratulations.
Continue to be amazed at all the praise we get from, from our staff and especially Jason, so you're doing great. You've made a big difference since you've been here, so thanks a lot. Okay, we'll move on to our first presentation and public hearing. Will the city clerk please sound the next item?
Mr. Mayor, it's a presentation of the city of Milton's draft twenty thirty comprehensive plan, the community agenda. It's agenda item number ten dash twelve-eight-six. It was introduced at the November first special called Work Session. What we'll do tonight is ask you to entertain a motion and a second and a vote in first presentation, then we'll hold a public hearing.
Okay.
The first thing we should do is vote on it for a presentation.
Just go ahead and vote on it, okay.
I'd like to --
Okay, now open up for a motion and a second.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion for the first presentation of the presentation of the city of Milton's draft twenty thirty comprehensive plan, the community agenda.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Now we'll open up the public.
Okay, now we'll open up the public hearing, and do we need to present anything or just go ahead and open up for comments?
No, we're, we're going to make a presentation before comments.
Good evening, I'm Michelle McIntosh-Ross, planner with the city of Milton, and I just want to give an overview of the background of what's leading up to where we are today. As many of you may know, the state of Georgia requires all municipalities to have a local comprehensive plan that describes the vision for the future and states the policies for the realistic growth and development that may occur over a twenty-year period. According to the state planning standards, there are three components to the comprehensive plan. The community assessment, which is a document that is, documents the existing conditions; the community participation plan, which is a plan for community involvement; the community agenda, which is the actual comprehensive plan document. After Milton's incorporation in two thousand and six, the county's comprehensive plan, Focus Fulton, two thousand and twenty-five, was adopted as an interim comprehensive plan. In two thousand and seven, the preparation of the city's first comprehensive plan was initiated. The community assessment and the community participation sections were completed in two thousand and eight and sent to the state agencies, ARC and DCA, for review and comment, and they passed. Milton was then authorized to proceed with the community agenda. On advice from the state, a partial plan update was done to replace the county's Focus Fulton, two thousand and twenty-five, plan. CPAC and staff continue to work with the community-based involvement towards completing the community agenda before the two thousand and eleven deadline. Today, a draft of the community agenda is ready for public review and comment. And George Ragsdale, the chair of the CPAC, is here to present the overview of the comprehensive plan, the community agenda.
I'd like to echo what Mayor Lockwood said and thank everybody for being here to listen to the presentation of the comprehensive plan. Do I have a clicker or is somebody going to advance these?
Still clicking for it.
Oh, okay. This is a, for the most part, a repeat of the presentation that we made on November first, but we'll be happy to entertain any additional questions that come up. The purpose here is just to give everybody an understanding of what is in the agenda. We start with an executive summary that outlines the, the overview of the process that Michelle just went through, a statement of the vision for the city of Milton, and the specific planning goals and objectives that we have going forward. We then go through a description of the issues and opportunities in eight different areas. These are things that are not necessarily one for one. We tried to identify things that we think need to be improved, as well as, as opportunities for, for improvement. And in eight specific areas, we then move into the future development map. Michelle? Which, which is really intended to illustrate the, the implementation of those policies that we have recommended for the city going forward. We also, in that future development map, define and identify areas that require special attention. Some of them are environmental areas and things of the like that require special focus for the planning process going forward. We identify community facilities, schools, churches, equestrian areas, and, and natural features of the city of Milton. We then go into specific character areas. For those of you that were here back in July when we conducted our charrettes, we identified eight different distinct character areas in the city of Milton. They're listed here by name. The character area map will, will indicate where they are, and what we have done is describe what we believe is the, the characteristics of each of those geographical areas, and then what we would like to see those areas become over time. The future land use map then goes into a parcel-based description of what the city of Milton would look like in the future. This is a plan that covers, tries to look out as far as two thousand and thirty to identify what, how city of Milton will develop over that period of time. And the future land use map is a reflection of that. We then go into specific policies, which are really recommendations from the community. The Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee is really nothing more than a group of citizens that were identified when this process started to represent the community, and as Michelle indicated, through the participation process and through the assessment process, we've continually tried to solicit community input. So the policies are really a distillation of the, of the community input into specific policy recommendations going forward. We then try to identify specific implementation measures for each of the character areas, and we classify them into short-term and long-term, with short-term being those things that we would hope to accomplish in the next five years. And trust me when I say that the next five years are going to be very busy, and we're going to be very lucky if we can get everything done that we think needs to be done. We then talk about a report of accomplishments. Again, as Michelle indicated, we adopted the partial plan at the very tail end of last year, so when we talk about accomplishments in this particular document, we're going to be focusing basically on accomplishments during the previous ten or eleven months. The, the partial plan that we submitted and was approved back in, in December, covered the accomplishments since the city was formed in two thousand and six up until the end of two thousand and nine. And then lastly, we talk about the consistency with service delivery strategies for the There is an appendix we elected to include with, with the document. There, there's been an awful lot of work done over the years, both prior to the formation of the city when we were part of, when we were, the planning process was managed by Fulton County, as well as since the formation of the city. So we've attached the Crab Apple Plan, the Birmingham Plan, the Rural Preservation Plan, the Milton Transportation Plan, and the Milton Trail Plan, all of which we feel are relevant to the way the city's going to be developed going forward. Last but not least, and this is the, the one departure from the presentation that we made back on the, the ninth, or, I'm sorry, back on the first. We, we, since the, since the very beginning of this process, wanted to develop a financial model that would reflect the city's ability to be able to fund the comprehensive plan growth and change as we identified it. What we, what we have done is developed a model that is based on the comprehensive plan document, that is posted on the website, and that is in front of the council tonight. That particular financial model supports the population growth projections that we have talked about since the inception of the plan. The model is based on the two thousand and eleven budget. When, when we started the financial model, we were, we were looking at two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, and projecting from there, but since we've moved forward, we've been able to put in two thousand and eleven's budget as the base and then extrapolate from there. So we've eliminated some of the noise over the last couple of years that have, that have occurred with the finances for the city. What I'll show you in a minute is that the model reflects revenues covering expenses through two thousand and fourteen, with a slight gap in two thousand and fifteen that begins to widen thereafter. The other thing we've tried to do, the model is constructed with the capital spending basically outside of the model. The city doesn't have a long-term capital spending plan, and basically constructs a capital plan each year. And so what we've tried to do is to keep capital spending out of, out of the plan, out of the model. Capital spending can continue at the same inflation-adjusted rate that's in the, the budget for this year through about two thousand and twelve, but thereafter, unless something changes, there'll be a gap in, on the capital side as well as on the expense side. And when we get through looking at this, we'll talk about some of the alternatives for how to deal with that. So a couple of slides that I'd like to show you, and for those in the audience, I know this is going to be kind of hard to see, so I'll try and describe them. What we were asked to do was to develop a financial model that mirrored the comprehensive plan, and what we first tried to do was to develop a financial model that mirrors basically the old comprehensive plan, or the old land use plan, if you will. So what we've called the static model, as, as you can see in front of you, has basically the same result as with the model that matches the plan, and that being that in about two thousand and thirteen-ish, expenses start to exceed revenues, and that's the red line on top. And what you see up on the screen, the red line is expenses, the green line is revenues. And so shortly, shortly, very shortly in the future, the revenues are exceeded by expenses based on the, the current land use plan. Next slide, Michelle? And as you can see in the, in the actual numbers, beginning in two thousand and eleven, excuse me, two thousand and twelve, there is a deficit on the capital side, assuming that the capital spending stays the way that it's, it's modeled here. The deficit on the, on the operating expense side begins to occur in two thousand and thirteen and then continues out. The difference that I want to point out, though, here is on the next slide, Michelle, and that is if you look down to two thousand and thirty, which is the endpoint for this plan, the current land use plan projects a population of thirty-six thousand, six hundred and four, excuse me, nine hundred and four, which, as you can see, is short of the population projection that we had said we were going to build into the model at forty-four thousand, six twenty-one. So it's about eight thousand short based on the current land use plan. So the comprehensive plan closes that gap. The comprehensive plan includes land use changes, changes in the land use plan that close that gap on the population side without sacrificing the, the revenue versus expense picture that I just showed you. So if we go forward, what we're calling the dynamic model, for lack of a better word, this is the model that, that is based on the comprehensive plan that's in front of you. As you can see, the, the shape of the curves is not significantly different from what we just showed you in the static model. If you turn the page, you will see that the gap in operating revenue and expense is about a year later. The gap in capital is about the same point in two thousand and thirteen. But more importantly, when you get to the third piece, which is the population projection, and you look at two thousand and thirteen, we're, we're within about a thousand of, of the population projection. So what's this showing, is showing is that the land use, excuse me, the comprehensive plan that's in front of you has identified land use opportunities to accommodate the population growth that we said we wanted to build the model around. To give you an example, or a couple of examples, and we aren't going to go through all of them, but to give you a couple of examples, if you look at the next page, this is a view of the, of the Birmingham character area. And as you will note, in the Birmingham character area, there, there are approximately twenty-three hundred acres of land in the, in the old land use plan that is undeveloped. This, the land use, the comprehensive plan that's in front of you assumes that that twenty-three hundred acres is developed into single-family AG1 lots, which is shown here at the top of the page. A hundred percent of that is, is in this particular character area is converted into single-family lots. That's the kind of change that's necessary in order to be able to accommodate the population growth. Now, that doesn't mean that there couldn't be future changes to some medium or high-density housing in those areas in exchange for, for single-family in order to preserve more, more green space, but the model is based on the assumption that we were going to match the population growth in, in these areas with minimum disruption. If you look at the next page, which is central Milton, you'll see a little bit different picture. In central Milton, there's about twenty-eight hundred, this is on my glasses, about twenty-eight hundred square feet, or acres of undeveloped land, seventy percent of which is being converted into AG1, and the remainder remaining is being retained as, as undeveloped space. So again, there are things that could be changed, but the, at the end of the day, the land use plan that's part of the comprehensive plan is, is targeted to try and match the population growth and come as close as we can to having a, a balanced budget going forward. Let me come back to the budget question, because this is what we talked about back on the first. There is a shortfall that the, that the model is projecting. There are some adjustment options. There are some adjustment options that could be pursued. Obviously, one is to identify additional revenue sources, particularly with respect to capital spending. We would certainly recommend that the city develop more of a long-term capital spending plan so that there's a better understanding of what the financing needs are going forward. But there are alternatives for additional revenue sources, be it grants, bonds, increased commercial development. We've included very little change in the commercial development in Milton from the old land use plan. Transfer development rights, CIDs, impact fees, and others are all things that could be considered as ways to increase the revenue stream for the city. Obviously, operating expenses could be trimmed as an alternative, or capital spending could be reduced, but in either one of those cases, there's obviously a trade-off. We're giving up something to be able to do either one of those. The one thing that's not on here, and again, it depends, I think, on how much the city wants to use this model going forward. I personally think it's a good tool, but I think that there, it would be worthwhile to invest a little bit of money in trying to tweak the model to better reflect the current state of the city versus what it was when the model was created back in 2007. I don't know how much that would be. I have no idea, but I think that there's a little bit of modification that would be unofficial going forward. That's the end of the presentation. From a schedule standpoint, just to go forward, nothing has changed from a date standpoint. What we're looking for is any comments. The comprehensive plan is posted on the website. We're looking for comments, both from the community and from council, by the 24th of this month, which is a week from Wednesday, I believe. And then we will be back in front of you on the 20th of December with the recommendation to send it on for approval by, to DCA and ARC. Questions?
Any questions from council to the right-hand side? Alan?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rags, you said that the city might need to invest a little money to make changes to the model that reflect the conditions of the city now versus what it was when the model was first developed. Do you have an idea of what kinds of changes you might be...
Structural changes in the way that the model is constructed. The model was constructed based on land use designations and zoning classifications that were part of the old plan, and one of the things that we've recommended as part of the new plan is some changes in those things. We don't have the ability to change the underlying structure of the model. The rights to do that are not ours, and so, in order to do that, make it match current state, or at least match the plan in that respect, that's what we were talking about. A lot of the work that staff has done over the last couple of weeks has been to try and, if you will, shoehorn today's reality into the model so that we could produce meaningful results.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
The last thing is, and I should have said this because it's up there, but for those of you in the community that want to submit comments, as I said, it's on the website, and Michelle's email address is up there on the right-hand side. Please submit your comments to her electronically, and we will include them in our review between the 24th of November and the 20th of December.
And also, when you go to the website, we have a comp plan page, and if you go to that page, on the right side, you'll see an area that says, what does it say? What do you think? It says, "What do you think?", and then you can click on it, and you can send comments.
Thank you. Okay, and we're still in our public hearing, so ask the clerk, do we have any public comment that is speaking in support of the comprehensive plan?
Mayor, there's no comments, either support or an opposition.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And we'll move on to our first presentation. Will the city clerk please sound that items?
First presentation, number one, is approval of a text amendment to Chapter 54, telecommunications of the City of Milton Code of Ordinances, Sections 54-4.3, 54-7B, 54-11, and 54-21.1. It's Agenda Item Number 10-1287. The second is approval of a text amendment to replace in its entirety Appendix A, fees and other charges of the City of Milton Code of Ordinances, Agenda Item Number 10-1288.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the first presentation of Agenda Item 10-1287 and 10-1288.
Second motion. Okay, go to motion by Councilmember Hewitt, and second by Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we're going to move on to our zoning agenda. Will the city clerk please read the rules and sound the next item?
Mayor and council, the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider the zoning agenda. These items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. The petitions will be heard in the sequence listed on the posted agenda. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks provided time remains with the allotted time. City clerk staff will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable, before beginning their presentation. The Planning Commission heard the rezoning agenda items and recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. In addition, the applicant shall not submit material to the council during the meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should be submitted to the staff of the Department of Community Development to be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made within two years, immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating $250 or more to a local government official of the local government which will consider the application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the Planning Commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you've contributed $250 or more to a council member and you've not filed a disclosure prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our first agenda item is RZ 10-05/ U 10-01/ VC 10-03, Deerfield Parkway, West Side, by Alfreda Land Partners to rezon from C1 community business and OI office institutional to C1 community business, with a use permit to construct a special school for the transitions, vocational school for adult students at least 18 years of age with autism, and an assisted living facility for autistic adults with 72 studios. The applicant is also requesting a concurrent variance, too. One, allow the exterior wall materials of all non-residential buildings and townhouse, duplex, and multifamily buildings to consist of a minimum of 65% in lieu of 75% per vertical wall plane at the following, brick or natural stone, Section 64-1095P for the assisted living facility. Two, allow accent building materials for all non-residential buildings and also townhouse, duplex, and multifamily units to be limited to a maximum of 35% in lieu of 25% brick, tile, non-reflective glass, natural stone, and weathered polished or fluted face with fluted split face, broken face finish, Portland cement plaster, and lade systems architectural either precast or tilt-up, concrete fluted or with exposed finish or hardy plank, Section 64-1095Q for the assisted living facility. And three, allow the following exterior siding colors as produced by Cabot Solid Stains to be permitted, Napa Vine, Newport Blue, Brickstone Colonial Yellow, Section 64-1095T for the assisted living facility. This is Agenda Item Number 10-1279, first presentation on November the 1st, 2010. Lynn Tully.
Good evening. This site is a 12.87 acre site. It is located at Deerfield Parkway and is approved for retail, service, commercial, and/or office at a maximum density of 15,610.22 square feet per acre, zoned or a total of 165,000 square feet. And ONI pursuant to Z99-11, approved for retail, service, commercial, and/or office and accessory uses at a maximum density of 19,191 square feet per acre, or a total of 223,000 square feet, whichever is less. In addition, you should note that both the zoning parcels were approved for a height limit to no more than six stories pursuant to U 00-25 and U 99-08. The request is, however, for C1 community business zoning and ONI institutional to C1 community business with a use permit for a special school. The special school is to develop a, in addition to a residential assisted living facility for adults with autism, and a total of 72 studios. The recommended conditions are consistent with the provisions of the zoning ordinance. Secondly, the applicant asks to develop a 23,000-square-foot, two-story transitions vocational school for autistic adults of at least 18 years old. The site plan analysis is included in your report, and it appears that the proposed development does meet all the required standards for development according to the state Route 9 overlay district, except for the concurrent variances as requested. I'll quickly go through the standards of review for the zoning. Whether or not the proposal will permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby property. The original zoning for this site was approved C1 for a six-story, 165,000-square-foot office building with an overall density of 15,610.22 square feet per acre. In addition, a small southern portion of the subject site is currently zoned ONI and U 99-08 for a six-story, 223,000-square-foot office building. Staff does note that pursuant to ZM 10-03, a site plan modification, was approved for Z93-11 to develop a 40,500-square-foot data center, and that is the item that you all recently heard, on eight and a half acres of the site. The remainder of the property is within the legal description of the subject site. Number two, whether or not the proposal will adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property, and the proposed development does not adversely affect these uses if developed with the recommended conditions. Number three, whether the property to be affected by the proposal has a reasonable economic use as currently zoned. The property does have a reasonable economic use as currently zoned as it is zoned to C1 community business. Number four, whether the proposal will result in a use which will or could cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. The proposed use, however, is not expected to significantly increase the amount of vehicular traffic, as demonstrated by the traffic study attached, but significantly less than if it was developed under the existing zoning conditions and site plan. Any impact should be mitigated according to the recommended conditions. Number five, whether the proposal is in conformity with the policies and intent of the land use plan. The proposed C1 zoning is consistent with the policies of the City of Milton Partial Plan Update. The subject property is located along Deerfield Parkway, south of Webb Road, which the Partial Plan Update discusses as being appropriate for retail and service uses. Number six, whether there are other existing or changed conditions affecting the use and development of the property which give supporting grounds for either approval or disapproval of the proposal. There are existing zonings of community business on the subject site to the west and to the north, office and institutional around, as well as additional C1 districts. Lastly, the adopted land use policy support this request to develop the assisted living and vocational school. And number seven, whether the zoning proposal will permit a use which can be considered environmentally adverse to the natural resources, environment, and citizens of Milton. Staff notes that the proposed rezoning will not have a negative effect on the environment and natural resources based on the fact that the site plan does indicate compliance with the required stream buffer and non-imperious setback. The site plan indicates that many of the specimen trees will be preserved, as well as open space, which will be provided along the eastern property line and the area between the school and the assisted living facility. Per Section 64-1831 of the ordinance, special schools are required to have a use permit, so that therefore, the applicant is also requesting a use permit to allow a special school, specifically a transitions vocational school for adults with autism. The school is proposed to be a total of 23,000 square feet and two stories in height. There are additional factors to consider for a special use permit, most of which are the same as those to consider for the zoning. I will add the condition of whether the proposed use may violate local, state, and/or federal statutes, ordinances, or regulations governing land development, and the proposed use does not violate any statutes, ordinances, or regulations as proposed. The effect of the proposed use on traffic flow, vehicular, and pedestrian circulation along adjoining streets, the proposed use is not expected to significantly increase the amount of vehicular traffic. The location and number of off-street parking spaces, the proposal has provided the recommended, excuse me, the required number of parking spaces and meets those regulations. The amount and location of open space, again, the site plan does indicate that one quarter of the eastern portion of the site is undisturbed with a springhead and perennial stream. There are also approximately 12 mature-sized trees located in the preserved area. There are other open spaces within the site and along Deerfield Parkway and in the center of the site, and therefore does meet the requirements. Protective screening, the site plan meets the required landscape strips for the entire parcel, and in addition, the stream bank and its setbacks allow for additional screening. The hours and manner of operation, the applicant indicates that the school will be used between 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., with occasional use during evening and weekends for special programming. Site lighting will comply with the outdoor lighting requirements, and access and curb cut have been provided opposite the Verizon Wireless offices and are adequate for the site. Would note that the site plan complies with all of these requirements for the standards of a special school. In conclusion, I would remind you that the Planning Commission did hear this request on October the 26th, and recommended approval conditional for the rezoning 10-05, approval conditional for rezoning, or, excuse me, use permit 10-01, and approval conditional for the variance VC 10-03, all three parts, with the change that the Planning Commission recommended, that the variance be approved specifically for the front facade, that it should be articulated with 65% bricks or natural stone up through the gables. Those recommended conditions are included in your packet. I'll be happy to read those if you also choose.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right now, are there any questions from council to staff?
Back on your last statement, as far as the DRB recommendations in here, was that superseded by a letter that you make note of back here on, what is it, October 13?
It's the DRB, it's October 5th, sir. Is that correct? Page 21.
Was there a subsequent proposal made by the applicant?
The applicant has tried to comply with those. They do know that, and specifically, their colors, those comments, the DRB was in favor of them having a differing color than what is actually allowed in the Highway 9 overlay district. As far as the brick and stone requirements, they gave them suggestions in order to allow them to try to meet that 75%, and they're close right now. They, again, the Planning Commission requested in their zoning conditions, an amendment that would require about 65% by running that brick and stone up, basically, the front gables are what's considered a pop-out on the front of the buildings. And they haven't shown that on these latest elevations, but that was one of the conditions of the Planning Commission.
So, is the latest, is there a consensus there between DRB, Planning Commission, and the applicant? and the applicant to vary from the Deerfield or Highway Nine Overlay color selection?
On the colors, absolutely, sir. And in fact, they've asked us to go back and look at the color palette and see if we can't update that a little bit.
Okay. Any other questions from staff before we open up the public hearing?
Before I open up to comments, I want to just share with everybody here, I have to say initially when this project was submitted, I know I can speak for myself and probably a lot of other people within our staff or council and whatnot, that this seemed like a very good, a very good project, that being a great location, great-looking project, and also was excited that be a facility that may fill the need for some of our citizens that had autism. That being said, as we've moved along, I've certainly heard from both sides, or not, wasn't always a rosy side, and there's, and I'm sure everyone else here has heard, heard both sides. I've heard people that are for this application and oppose it, and I certainly can see both sides, I can see both directions. But what I feel like I need to clarify is the fact that myself and our council, we've got to base our decisions on, on this as a zoning case, and it's based on our ordinances and zoning laws, and it's not based on the operation of it or the interior layout and things like that. And since this is a private operation, we've got to base it, again, like I say, this is a zoning case. And so, in sitting down with our staff, had to pull all the facts of what we've got to look at tonight. And by all means, I want to hear from everybody that's here tonight, and I'm sure the council does too, but I also want to let you know, and I'll also ask the city attorney to pipe in, that these are, these are what, the facts that we have to look at this project from. And I know there's, there's some emotion in this, but by our zoning code, the rezoning request for an autistic care center and special school may only be considered in light of the following criteria. The Planning Commission must have a recommendation. The use is suitable in view of the development of adjacent and nearby properties. The proposal will not adversely affect the existing use of adjacent or nearby property. Whether the property to be affected by the zoning proposal has a reasonable economic use is currently zoned. That the proposal will not cause an excessive use of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. The proposal is in conformity with the policies and intent of the land use plan or an approved economic development revitalization plan. Whether the area is a transition, whether the area is a transitioning area, i.e. changing from agriculture to commercial. Whether the proposal could be considered environmentally adverse to the natural resources. Whether the proposal may violate local, state, and federal statutes, ordinances, or regulations governing land development. And finally, other potential land development issues involving traffic, parking, open space, lighting, access, et cetera. And at this point, I'd like to, if our city attorney has guided us through this, if you'd like to make any comments on what it is that the council, what we need to look at to base our decisions.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I certainly am aware of this dialogue has been ongoing, and I have looked at the statements that's been prepared by staff. You've heard Ms. Tully discuss with you what the Milton zoning code requirements are. You've looked at the planning recommendation, which have closely tracked the code itself, and I'm in agreement. This council has adopted rules and regulations that guide your decision-making in this issue, and although certainly with respect to public hearings, we want to hear every comment and want to take the full measure of public and stakeholder sentiment on this issue, but with respect to what the council can consider, I believe, Mr. Mayor, you've done an effective job of going over the criteria, so I'm in support of that.
Okay. So first, I'd like to open up this for all those speaking in support of this application.
Mayor, the first card is from Mr. Hendricks.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Pete Hendricks, practice law at sixty-eighty-five Lake Forest Drive, Sandy Springs. Just to reiterate, as it is a zoning land use matter that is in front of you, the staff has done, I think, a very fine job of articulating as far as the development standards are concerned on pages ten through twelve, compliance as far as the rezoning standards, where needing to be in the affirmative, where needing to be in the negative, compliance pages twelve through seventeen, use permit standards, pages eighteen through twenty. But design review board, very interestingly, when we came in front of them, the only concurrent variances we were asking for were the percentages of maximum, minimum, interior, exterior relief, and they asked us to narrow that gap, which we've done. There's only ten percentage points difference on each of those requests. But what also came out of that meeting was a statement that, gosh, you know, technically you're in the Highway Nine Overlay, but the look, field, sense of it is that you're Deerfield, you're subject to Deerfield covenants, and there is no requirement for light brown, mid-brown, and dark brown, and we think that the palette that you've put in front of us is a lot better and encouraged us to file what is your third concurrent variance in front of you, and that is to allow the colors that are specified for utilization in the construction of the building. Staff actually goes on, on page twelve, to say, although the requested three-part concurrent variance may produce a more aesthetically pleasing development that is consistent with the applicant's vision, they were concerned about technical compliance with your standards, which I feel that the fourth-pronged standards are in compliance with. At this point in time, I'd like Mr. Rick Swanson to step up with the applicant, and he's also not only a principal, but is also the architect, to give you a brief work-through of the sense, look, and feel of what he's proposing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, if I may, I'd like to walk through our presentation. Interested time, I'm going to just read from the screen if I, if I may.
Mr. Swanson, if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. My name is Rick Swanson. My address is nineteen-thirty Amber Lake Court, Lake Forest, Illinois. I'm going to skip through the project summary, other than to say that it's thirteen-acre parcel on Deerfield Parkway. It's in the night, lot, Route Nine Overlay District. We do have twenty-four specimen trees. Three will be removed, but twenty-two will be protected. Two of the twenty-two will have roadway encroachments within the drip line, but not, do not justify removal. We propose to develop a campus of up to seventy-two assisted living units for adults with autism with a separate twenty-three-thousand-square-foot vocational training center. We are also requesting a rezoning of the property from O one and C one to C one only and obtain a use per, a use permit with concurrent variances. Requesting a consideration of a variance to allow the use of architecturally and historically appropriate exterior colors for the watercolors building, and we're requesting consideration of a variance to allow sixty-five percent of the watercolors exterior to be masonry veneer in lieu of the seventy-five percent current requirement. The City of Milton D R C offered encouragement and support for the proposed exterior colors and material massing. We're familiar with where the site is. Basically, the southwest portion of the property will be the vocational centers, transitions, and the northeast portion of the property will be the residential component, watercolors. A primary access will line up with Verizon on Deer, Deerfield Parkway. The growing group of developmentally disabled children and younger adults will need housing that allows them to live away from their families but still provide the medical, therapeutic, and vocational support they need. During the next fifteen years, more than five-hundred-thousand children with autism-related disorders will become adults. Many will be cared for by aging parents who likely will not outlive them. Adults with autism currently have few options for housing apart from their families. Watercolors will offer eight separate neighborhoods of six units each in three, three-story towers, which will be the first phase. A fourth tower may be constructed in the second phase at a later date. Each unit will be a one-bedroom studio with bathroom and surround a common community area with dining, serving kitchen, and great room. Given the lack of design standards for this population, we determined the program requirements that have to be created. We organized a focus group of vested caregivers and professionals to get a diverse perspective of the perceived program requirements. What we heard was, ensure safety and security, maximize familiarity, stability, and clarity, minimize sensory overload, allow opportunities for controlling social interaction and privacy, provide adequate choice and personal independence, foster health and wellness, enhance one's dignity, ensure durability, ensure accessibility, inclusion, and support in the community. In addition, we obtained rectified associates to conduct a thorough study of this market, which confirmed our initial findings and provided more specific insight. Basically, what the D R B saw and the Plan Commission concurred with is the following. The buildings are three-story. We do have a mixture of shingle and stone and brick. There is a standing seam metal roof. This is a, a, thank you. This is a craftsman style of architecture, which is consistent with the architectural vocabulary of the area. This is a rendering of what that building will look like if you were looking through the trees from Deerfield Parkway. The reality is, you won't be able to see much of the building from Deerfield Parkway. This is a view of the building looking east at the main entrance. After the age of twenty-one, all publicly offered educational services end for children with autism. Transitions will provide day programs of vocational training for adults based on ability and need. This will not be daycare and only available to those who seek occupational, psychological, and educational advancement. If job opportunities are available on campus, they would be offered to residents based on ability and with prevailing wages at, for that task. The proposed building will be twenty-three-thousand-square-feet and two stories and utilize sustainable materials and technology. Some portion of the campus will be, include an area for planting and a small organic garden. This is essentially the facade of the transitions building. Again, the standing seam roof, masonry, stucco, with a chocolate brown stain. And this is a rendering, this is a rendering of what the building will look like from the, from the southwest. Services offered: life skill training to foster independence, occupational workshop to train candidates in job proficiencies based on ability and aptitude, computer lab, horticultural training with greenhouse and community garden, indoor pool for therapeutic and recreational use, men's and women's locker rooms with showers, exercise room with aerobic and weight training equipment, lunchroom, service kitchen for preparation of daily meal and training purposes, job placement services, and a gift shop. That concludes my presentation. Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
There are a number of people from the community, I believe, have contacted you in support, and I'd like Craig Dureen to step up and just speak very briefly on behalf of the community folks that support the application. And anybody here in support, if you would, please signify, please.
Mayor, I've got comment cards that are in support of this application. We indicated we'd hear them in the order that cards were received, so I've got the next name.
Okay. We'll go in the order if you're all right with that, Mr. Hendricks.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Hang, hang on one second. Our next speaker is Darrell Smith.
We're going to go in order of the comment cards as they were received, if that's all right. Mr. Smith?
My name is Darrell Smith. My address is five-twenty-three Highland Park Trail at St. Roswell. Prior to that, I lived here and out in Florida, Georgia, for twenty-some-odd years, and I simply want to say that I am very much in favor of the proposed watercolors vocational facility and assisted living facility for those who suffer from spectrum disorders.
Mayor, we had one turned in, and just for the record, want to say Joseph Moore turned in a speaker card, did not wish to speak, wants comments right into the record, but there are no comments on this card, so I'm just, for the record, I don't know if Mr. Moore is still here or not.
Okay. Mr. Moore?
Come on up to the microphone, please.
The card is to show support, and I did not wish to speak at this time.
Jim Shandley, Shandley? Chandlee, I'm sorry if I get any of these wrong.
My name is Jim Chandlee, and I'm a resident of Milton. I commend all of you folks trying to lead our young city. Look, I'm not an expert in autism, but I know two things. I know the man that's behind this, and I know the years of research, diligent research that he has spent with autism societies, individuals with adult autism children. And I also know the kind of heart this man has. As an architect, he just wants to leave the world a little bit better place, to make life better for this segment of the population. These are a forgotten group. Once they turn twenty-two, there's very little for adult autistic, autistic individuals. He saw this need. It was brought to him, he studied it for three years. I heard a lot of what he did, and I know who he talked to. And I said, God, what an, what an order. If you can do this, you're really making a difference. This is Milton. We're a young city. Everything that we can do to enhance this city's image, its character, what we provide to our community, this would be truly an asset. But you know what else it is? It's a dream for those people who want a place to live like this. This is a dream for them. There's nothing else out there. There are people crying to want to get in a place like this. Yeah. Search your heart, search your soul. That's what this place is for, those people who are longing to have a place like this. Thank you.
Mayor, just to give us kind of a status check, we've got thirty-six seconds left in, in the, in the ten-minute requirement. Our next speaker is Craig Dureen.
How many, hold one second, Mr. Dureen. How many more comment cards do you have?
I have one more following this speaker.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Craig Dureen. I reside at six-forty Glen National Drive in Milton, Georgia. Been a resident of Milton since its inception several years ago. I simply want to state my one-hundred-percent approval and agreement with this project, although I do not have any family members afflicted with autism. I do personally know certain friends and business associates. I have spoken to them at length about a project like this, and they one-hundred-percent support the project. They feel it will be a tremendous asset to those individuals, to the community, as I do being a citizen of Milton. Thank you very much.
We're out of ten minutes, but I certainly want to allow, we'll probably run into this on the other side, too, so if it's okay with council, I'd like to add two more minutes. We'll add that to both sides, and then we'll, we'll see where we are when we, is that all right, Mr. Council? Okay.
Do we need to make a motion?
The rules anticipate a formal motion and vote on, on an extension of.
May I make a motion to extend to, to minutes to each side?
Second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to extend the time for each, each side in opposition or support for two additional minutes to a total of twelve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Our final speaker with the card is Michael McAlpin.
Mr. Mayor, city council, I reside at twenty-three eighty Saddle Springs Drive in Milton and was actually here to hear the comprehensive plan and not this. But incidentally, I own the property of ten-eighteen Witshire, which is directly across the street from this proposed development. I wasn't even aware this was on the agenda, but I believe it to be an ideal use of the property, and I just wanted to go on the record for that, so, thank you.
Okay. Okay. No problem. Okay. And I'll open it up to those that are here speaking in opposition of the proposal.
The first, first speaker is Ann Coggins.
I want to thank you all for taking the time to talk to us and listen to our opinions on this. My name is Ann Coggins, and I live at nine-fifty Pleasant Hollow Trail. I'm here tonight speaking to you as a mother of two children with disabilities. I'm also speaking to you as the chair of the Milton Disability Awareness Committee, and also our, as our involvement with the G C D D Real Communities Initiative. And I'm speaking in opposition of this congregate housing facility for people with autism. As you know, the mission of the Milton Disability Awareness Committee is to promote the inclusion of individuals of all abilities in, in our community through education and advocacy and influence to public policy. And throughout the times that, the years that we've worked together, many times we've had resolutions and proclamations where we all have agreed that we wanted to create a community that was both welcoming and accessible and inclusive for all citizens. Inclusive meaning that our citizens- Inclusive meaning that our citizens live, work, play, worship together in a community, that we embrace all of our citizens. And so what I'm here, really want to say to you is that whether or not this meets the zoning improvement requirements, I also want to appeal to you to stand firm on your commitment to have a city that does include all citizens. And when we build segregated housing and special schools that only allow people with autism in them is not considered inclusive because that eliminates their opportunity to be involved and have real relationships and real homes and real careers in the community. It also eliminates their opportunity to contribute their gifts to a community. So I ask that you consider, what is the vision that we've stated we have for our city? And is this... Since we know from legislation that we presented to you that this is not the direction that we're going in the United States for serving the needs of our citizens. So as an example to the state and the United States of how we want to do our city, how we want to build an inclusive community, we're going in the opposite direction with this. So I ask that you please consider your position, your vision for this city, and deny zoning for this. But at the very least, defer it to give us an opportunity to talk further about this and consider ways that we could do this better, and everybody could win in this. Because there are ways, and there are options in this, you have to consider, is this what you want for your city? Is it the vision that we've agreed we want? That's my statement. Please consider what you want for our city before you do this. I thank you all for your time. I thank everyone in the room for coming out tonight.
Mayor, the next speaker is Rita Young.
Good evening. I'm Rita Young. I live at 13300 Morris Road. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight, Mayor Lockwood and members of the City Council. I've lived in this area for about 10 years. I grew up in North Fulton, so I've been here most of my life, but I'm also the mother of two teenage sons who have autism and the Public Policy Director, All About Developmental Disabilities in Atlanta. And I'm here to ask you to reject this rezoning proposal for this particular facilities... Facility. I am not here to talk about pallets, but people. I love people with autism and work very diligently, both personally and professionally, to ensure that people are accepted in everyday life. I have visited Central State Hospital in Milledgeville and Grace Wood in Augusta, and firmly believe that placing 72 people with autism in a residential facility of this kind or any kind is a terrible idea from many viewpoints. I know that you said that this is a land use issue, but I just want you to know what you could potentially be getting the city into. First of all, the Department of Justice recently settled a lawsuit with the state of Georgia just last month that would stop all admissions of people with developmental disabilities like autism into our state hospital institutional settings as of July 2011, and would move the people who currently live there out into the community by 2015. So public institutions are not closing so that private businesses like Watercolors will be needed, but because people with autism need to be served one at a time, one family at a time, not in large group settings. Because in response to this statement, Georgia is moving to individualized services, I would also be concerned that Watercolors would not be able to obtain the proper license to even operate this kind of facility. Secondly, and most importantly, for the residents, for the individuals who have autism, aggregating large groups of people with autism will create a high-stress environment. Because when you group people together who have behavioral issues, there is a high likelihood that there will be altercations, that residents could get hurt. We know that historically, housing large groups of people with disabilities together leads to neglect and abuse. Lastly, I believe, and I know that you all have no control over this, there's a high probability that the business will fail. Down the road, when private funds are exhausted, families will have to reconsider government support under Medicaid. Because of regulations under Medicaid, public funds cannot be used for these types of residential facilities. And the consequences of if this business fails, it's not like the Taco Bell in the neighborhood that closes. There are lives of vulnerable people at stake. Milton is a great city to live and raise a family. Please do not let a business take our city back to the 18th century by allowing this rezoning to pass. I am adamantly against this project being built in our city. At the very, very least, with all the community concerns that you will hear tonight, I would ask for a deferral of this decision and suggest that Mayor Lockwood call a meeting with MDDAC, the management company who will provide the services for the residents, and a representative from our state Developmental Disability Office. This meeting should focus on exploring whether this project is even viable for the city. Thank you so much for your time.
Mayor Randy Grayson is the next speaker.
My name's Randy Grayson. I have a condo at 1217 Witshire Way, and first learned about this when I got a flyer in the mail and started asking people in the community what was going on. And I have a child with autism, and I volunteer for a lot of groups in Georgia. And Autism Speaks, Autism Society, MDDAC, Georgia Council, AADD. I asked them about this development. None of them have been contacted. None of them have been talked to about what this development was going to look like. None of them had really been talked to about what was going to go on. And that troubles me, that our local experts and local people in the community haven't been talked to. One of the questions that I heard was that, does this adversity affect the adjacent use of property? And I think it does. If my daughter wants to grow up and be a member of the villages of Devonshire, she wants to be a part of that community, what is she going to say to the person that says to her, "There's a facility down the street for you"? How is she going to live in the community when there's a segregated living facility right down the way? Before zoning, I know, I recognize there's a lot of issues here, but I would want to know that my government, before it approved a zoning requirement based solely on what it's looked like, required the business to meet with local experts, local officials, and really made a plan that was going to effectively meet the needs of the community and the people that they serve. I do believe that the folks, I have talked to them a couple of times, are willing to do that, and they will do that in the future if you require them to meet with MDDAC and defer this and give them an opportunity to create a plan that will actually work for people with autism in your community. Thanks.
Okay, Mayor, we have a total of seven speakers, just to give you a status check. The next speaker is Eric Jacobson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Eric Jacobson. I'm the Executive Director of the Georgia Council on Developmental Disabilities. And I want to take just a minute to talk about, actually, the issues that you brought up earlier when you were discussing your comprehensive plan, because I think that when you look at the comprehensive plan and the policies and procedures that this board, this council, have adopted over the past few years, I think that what you'll see is that the proposed development is actually in opposition to what you've already discussed. But I think before that, we need to understand that this is a complex issue. It's a complex issue that can't be explained easily. There are assumptions about what people with disabilities can and cannot do, and over the last 35 to 40 years, it's been proven time and time again that people with disabilities can and should live in communities that are inclusive of all people. Otherwise, people should not be segregated, set aside in other places, and supported in a way in which they're not allowed or not able to participate in their community. But let me talk about some of the policies within your land use plan that you've adopted or started to work on this evening. First of all, under the Issues and Opportunities section, one of the things that we talked about was the importance of accessibility and universal design that benefits all citizens. The idea behind universal accessibility and universal design is that everything we do is open to all people, so that anybody can visit and anybody can come. Current development patterns, in fact, this is, again, a part of your plan, do not reflect a comprehensive awareness of accessibility and universal design. So what I would suggest to you is that if you allow for the continuation of this development, that there could be a condition be placed on it, that all buildings are designed with universal design and visitability as a part of it. Second piece, under Policies and Economic Development, this is 1.5, we will consider employment needs and skills levels of our existing population in making decisions on proposed development projects. Again, one of the things I would ask is that you put a condition on this, that we must require the developer to hire an entity that has experience in getting people with autism's jobs in the community. It's very difficult and very important that if they're going to really get people jobs in the community, that they have folks involved that understand and are able to do that at the same time. Next, under Housing, we'll accommodate our diverse population. I want to repeat what Rita said earlier, and that is that in housing, the United States Department of Justice has recently settled a suit with the state of Georgia that basically says that people with disabilities should not be in institutions, and it's in violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act by putting people in institutional kinds of settings. So one of the things that you've done repeatedly over the last four years is pass proclamations supporting the ideas behind the ADA. Again, this would be in violation of that piece. Finally, if I understand this correctly, the zoning for the shelter... For the special school, which is defined in Section 64, 64-1 of your code, defines "school specially," meaning it's an educational... Means an educational use devoted to special education...
Mayor, that's the 12 minutes. I just want to interrupt and let you know.
Okay. Let me break in for one second. Would be the will of the council to make a motion in a second to add another two minutes to each side.
How many more people do we have?
I have three more cards in opposition after the speaker.
Three more cards after the speaker?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we're going to need three more minutes.
I'm fine with two or three. Again, I want to let everybody have a chance to talk, so how about, do I have a motion for to add three additional minutes to each side?
May I put forward such a motion?
The second motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to add three additional minutes to each side, opposition and those in support for a total of 15.
I'm just about finished as well, so thank you. Again, your code states that a school, a special school, means an educational use devoted to special education, including the training of gifted, learning disabled, mentally or physically, I'll change the word here, it says handicap, but I would say persons with disabilities, but not operated by the Fulton County Board of Education. What I would suggest to you is that this is not a school being developed. In fact, if you looked at what was being proposed, there are no curriculums that are being offered as a part of the facility, the Transitions Facility that's being proposed. I'm not sure this would fit your definition of what a special school is. And then finally, again, I just want to remind you of some of the proclamations that you passed in July of 2009, that people should live independently in the community, that it's the intent of the City of Milton to include all people, including persons with disabilities, in every aspect of community life. I think I just want to conclude by saying that the Georgia Council on Developmental Disabilities has had a really great opportunity to work here in Milton over the past year. In fact, you as a council have appropriated funds in order to create real communities right here in your area, and we appreciate this special relationship that's been developed between the council and the City of Milton, and we think that in light of that, as a part of what we're trying to do with real communities, the proposal, it falls in direct opposition to what we've been trying to create. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we've got about a minute and 28 seconds left. The next speaker, Debbie Dobbs.
Hello, I'm Debbie Dobbs. I live at 6550 Stapleford Lane, and I run the North Fulton Autism Support Group. Our group has never been contacted by the developer. We have not heard from anybody. We have hundreds of families in our group, and nobody has been asked. Our children's voices have been lost yet again. They did not speak with us. We have serious concerns about this plan. I'm a parent of a child who happens to be on the autism spectrum, not afflicted and not suffering, but a child. What I heard tonight in the description from the people who were proposing this plan turned my stomach. This is not how I want my child to be viewed, and I'm offended. Thank you.
Mayor, the next speaker is Mark Baker.
I'm Mark Baker. I'm the Director of Advocacy for the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities. I live at 126 Wild Horse Cove in Cleveland, Georgia. I work with advocacy communities, community-based organizations all over the state. For the last three years, those organizations have been in support of an action to make sure that the state does not create entities like this ever again. The Department of Justice agreement that has been reached just in the last month will ensure that people needing disability services will be able to receive residential services in a humane, dignified, and integrated way.
Mayor, I'm sorry to have to break in again, but we've hit your time limit again.
Okay. I'm just going to kind of break the rules and go ahead and allow the...
Thanks, I'm almost done.
Was this the last?
We have one more.
All right. Well, if that's the case, then I'm going to give us a couple more minutes, see if... Can I get two more minutes out of council?
As long as it's even on both sides, whatever it is.
We have one more.
Just, I will just close by saying that communities all over Georgia, which I work with, have worked these last three years to make sure that institutions of this size and shape do not happen again. And the Olmsted decision that was handed down 10 years ago reinforces that, and I urge you to please take careful consideration of the impact of that on this consideration tonight and your future. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask that if we've got one more comment card, if we can hear that comment and whatever the time is, then allow the other side that same amount of time. Is that okay with the council? If you don't have a motion in a second?
We just make a motion to make all this legal.
Yeah, just go ahead and make a motion to hear the last speaker, then we'll keep time, and we've got that track, Mr. Mayor, at this point.
Do I have a motion in a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Mayor, the last speaker, and I apologize, I'm having a hard time reading the last name, is Scott. It might be Baylor? Bales, sorry, an S with an R, I apologize.
Hi, I'm Scott Bales. I'm an individual with autism, and this particular facility would be targeted toward people like me. I have worked very hard in my life to be successfully included. I hold down a job, and I play in the orchestra at my church, and I'm in Graduate School of Georgia State. I'm also the first and only appointee to the State Advisory Panel on Special Education by the Governor, who has an individual with autism, and I'm on the Steering Committee of the Online Autism Research Consortium. The Centers for Disease Interel involves, considers me to be an expert of actual experience, and has involved me in training epidemiologists and national field staff as well as pediatricians. I'm also on the Georgia Council for Developmental Disabilities. There's a lot of issues in regard to any housing. First of all, facilities like this have a very bad track record, even from the educational When you congregate kids and youth with autism, they have an infamous history of picking up bad behaviors that make it even more difficult to successfully be included and integrated into, you know, the greater society. And, you know, it just tends to be a breeding ground. Pick up bad stuff from each other, they don't learn to get along with the neurotypical world, which we have to, you know, survive in and even possibly thrive. There's, you know, you're talking about fixing, having a cafeteria fix food. A lot of people with autism are extremely picky eaters and have an enormous number of food allergies to gluten and casein and soy and peanuts and corn, and, you know, the list is very long, and I pretty much have all of them to one degree or another, and, you know, most people don't know... you know, most people don't know, you know, we just kind of take care of our own diets, and there's no kitchen in these rooms. Also, we tend to have a very strong allergy to any kind of fluorescent halogen or LED lighting, and in my home, I have only incandescent lights, pretty much, and everything's on a dimmer switch, so I can dim it to, you know, the dim lighting, and any facility like this that would be built needs to be completely free of fluorescent halogen and LED lighting and incandescent natural lighting only. There are enormous noise issues, and in my home, I've had to put extra insulation in the walls of my bedroom and the ceiling, just to muffle, you know, sound, so I can sleep at night, because I'm so sound hypersensitivity, and there's so many, you know, allergies to, you know, all kinds of, you know, dust and chemicals and everything, and the building materials would have to be like hypoallergenic and probably no carpet, you know, because they might accumulate dust and everything, and, let me see, well, there, there's, it's very hard to find, people are really sensitive to people with autism as far as staffing, and there's the, you know, I wouldn't live in a facility like this, and I don't know of any adult who would voluntarily live in a facility like this. I mean, we want to be part of the greater community. We don't want to be, you know, segregated like we're some unwanted leper, you know. Do you have any questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Take that on public comment. It looks like the, there's no more in opposition, the approval has some time left, they'd like to speak.
Thank you. Vast majority of comment that you heard is about the institutionalization of this whole subject, and particularly with view of the litigation. It was that very subject of that litigation and the abuses that stem from state government institutionalized efforts of trying to deal with this issue that has given rise to what you've got in front of you this evening, which is unique in the spectrum and scheme of this whole issue of autism, in taking a private sector, private pay, totally voluntary development that weds residential in small little community pockets with a transition vocational school. It's cutting edge. It's not been done. And with that, I'd like Rick to step up and speak to other particulars of comments that were made by the opposition.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I want to thank the folks who spoke. In fact, I've spoken with a number of them, and I appreciated the opportunity to get their input. I want to start by saying that we're not an institution. This is a home, and it's by choice. If it doesn't fit one's needs, then they have the choice not to live there. We're not pushing anyone to live there. Our goal is to provide inclusion within the community by creating an actual place that caters to and is sensitive to the needs of those with autism. Autism by nature is a spectrum disorder, and it can range, and everyone is different. The gentleman who just spoke is, his opinion is that he wouldn't live here. He's got that right. And in fact, I will tell you that we would be the first ones to step up and help someone be placed in a home and a community if they feel that's a more appropriate environment for them. Unfortunately, ladies and gentlemen, that's not reality for everyone. There are many, many people in this country who don't have that luxury. They don't have that option. They're not being served. And my clients have been those people. Now, I may not have talked to every single person in the state of Georgia as it relates to this, but I've talked to a number of people, and I can give you my resources. One of the key people that I've talked to are the adults with autism themselves. They've been my real source, and I've been introduced to them through Have Dreams of Park Ridge, which is one of many organizations, Park Ridge, Illinois, one of many park organizations in the country who have been proactive with us in helping us to understand this. We've met with parents who have no place to go. They have a fear of not knowing what they're going to do when they're no longer here. And while it's wonderful to say that we've got all these wonderful plans for these adults, the reality is, this country can't serve them. That's the reality. So, what I've said from the beginning, and I will continue to say, as long as we're able to do this, we keep our doors open, we keep our minds open, we're willing to listen, but we're not going to take a one-sided approach to this. We're going to provide a choice for these adults, and we're going to continue to move forward, very proud of what we're doing, and we appreciate the opportunity to do this. My clients are these, the people that are vested in autism. I've listened to them. I've listened to them for three years, and our design and our plan is the result of that input. Thank you.
Okay, is there any more in support? Okay. I will close the public hearing and open up to questions for staff or if any council members have a question for the applicant.
Thank you, Mayor. There was a comment made by one of the presenters that this proposed development would be in violation of ADA. Could you speak to that, Mr. Gerard?
Well, to the extent that the proposal is in violation of any law, it may affect the ability, I think there was one speaker who talked about licensure or permitting, or it may result in some sort of enforcement action. Let me just say this from the city of Milton's perspective. Right now, I am unaware of the proposal being violative of any law. It may be offensive to certain sections of public policy, or perhaps even professional sentiment, but as far as being a violation of the law, I'm not aware of it. If it is a violation of law, it will obviously have to be prevented, but I am not aware at this present time, nor has staff made me aware, nor have my discussions with members of the community that have spoken here tonight placed me on notice that there is a legal prohibition on what is being proposed this evening.
Who else? Go ahead, Jeff.
Lynn.
Yes, sir.
I was going to ask you, there seems to be a disconnect between what the designer review board talked about in terms of the variances and what the staff is recommending. Are you saying that you're not in agreement, the staff was not in agreement with what the DRB had looked at and considered?
What we gave you was the technical recommendation based on the letter of the law requirements. We do realize, however, that the options for DRB color palette are pretty much, as Mr. Hendrick stated, light brown, dark brown, and medium brown. So, we understand that that might be appropriate for some areas, but potentially Deerfield is not necessarily one of those, in light of some of the other developments that are along Deerfield Parkway.
I guess this would perhaps be for you also, Lynn. I believe Mr. Jacobson spoke of there may be a possibility that special school doesn't, in this case, doesn't meet our definition of special school. Could you speak to that?
Sure. In that definition, it does read, as Mr. Jacobson quoted. I will, however, say that it's not necessarily crafted as a term of art for planning. It may be within their professions, but at our, to our interpretation of that definition, it meets the requirements.
Second, I don't know who this is to. What additional type of licensure would be required for this development outside of the city of Milton, you know, typical building permits and that sort of thing? Is there an additional type of licensure that is required for this?
There is a state license that's also required, and I'll allow the applicant to, or ask that the applicant speak more to that if you all so wish.
Any licensure that were required, we will seek with the state if needed.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Julie?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to thank everybody for your comments, and obviously for being here and showing an interest in what goes on in the places that you live and work, and appreciate both perspectives. As it relates to the legal question at hand, I think I've heard you say that there are, to your knowledge, no negative implications relative to the ADA. Can you also just speak to the court case that was mentioned in terms of a finding within the last four weeks, just to be specific?
Yeah, I believe the decision they're talking about pertain to a, I believe it was a memorialized settlement between the Department of Justice and the state of Georgia, and I will simply say this, whatever it may or may not forecast with respect to the direction of the state of Georgia, it's not going to have implications with respect to land use on the city of Milton. Obviously, Milton was not a party to the case, and it's going to have, and quite frankly, it wasn't even a legal adjudication, although it may have been memorialized and sanctioned by the court. It was a settlement agreement, so it was a negotiated agreement. But again, with respect to zoning issues and land use decisions, I have no facts or information before me that suggests it's controlling on the issue before you this evening.
And maybe just another legal question, is that based on the sanctions that we have before us, can you just speak to, and it also speaks to what the mayor spoke to initially, but what we're required by law to evaluate with regards to what's before us?
Yes, in fact, I think the mayor spoke to that, and I think Ms. Tully spoke to it, and I will repeat that. I mean, we have a zoning code that contains elements that this council has adopted and has ratified by previous action that sets forth the criteria by which you have to review this matter, and, you know, that's it. And that's the things that I know that staff has tried to put together and provide to you, that's what you're grappling with now. But a lot of the things that were stated during the public comments, while terribly compelling, and I don't mean to diminish that in any respect, things about licensure by the state with respect to professional sanction of this sort of activity, with respect to the economic viability of this sort of activity, those are not issues that can control your decision. If a business comes to Milton and it's simply got no customer base, it will fail. The market will control that, and the users will control that, but that is not what can control your decision in this sort of instance. You have to look at the elements in your code. You have to comply with your land use map and your comprehensive plan as best you can, and make a decision, and then allow the market and the potential clients of the service or facility provided to decide whether this will stand the test of the market.
Thank you, Mr. Gerard. Just another question with regards to the licensure requirements. I think I heard the applicant said that they would, of course, have to abide by those. Mrs. Tully, can you just speak to the timing of land disturbance? Should this proceed? Land disturbance versus licensure requirements? Would those requirements have to be met before there was any land disturbance that would be permitted by the city of Milton?
Actually, typically, it's in the reverse. The building is typically constructed prior to issuance of a business license, and the business license would be contingent on any other requirements, particularly if there were a state license involved.
And then, Mr. Gerard, can you just maybe comment on that? Is that in this case, would there be any licensure requirements beyond what we're typically accustomed to with the process that Mrs. Tully just outlined?
Probably not. I mean, once again, this is a product of the developer's due diligence. I mean, they need to be the ones before they expend money and resources to make sure they can get whatever the appropriate licensure is with the state. There are a host of developments that have to do that very thing, and the burden and onus is on those developers to make sure they can get the license they need to do whatever it is they are attempting to do. So, the city of Milton will handle this like any other development, and will issue, you know, do inspections, issue business licenses, issue COs, and issues with respect to any state licenses will be between the developer and the state, and that really, and I'm not trying to minimize it, but that will be their issue and not necessarily Milton's.
Thank you. I do appreciate it. In terms of requirements, I know that we heard from a lot of citizens that were asking if they could have the opportunity to be part of an entity, whether it be MDAC and/or an extension of MDAC, and some of those that represent children of autism, et cetera, but also the broader community throughout the state of Georgia. Are you aware, Mr. Gerard, of any opportunity for us to make that as a part of condition, and/or would that be something the applicant would be willing to have as a part of our assessment this evening, as to whether or not you would be willing to have a formal group or entity put together as, if you will, maybe an advisory sort of group and/or entity to work directly with the organization that's before us this evening?
In order to tie it down, I think correctly, that the parties that have the requisite interest get pulled together to the table. I can commit on behalf of the applicant that post this hearing, the applicant will be glad to put together a committee, working with staff, to have included on that committee folks from the community that have an interest in the ongoing nature of this proposed development.
I'm sorry. I do have a question about the site plan. It was languished within the analysis that there were three specimen trees that would potentially, not potential, but that would be taken out. I realized that there were some that would be also saved. Could other staff perhaps just speak to that? I don't know that Mark Law is available, but could somebody speak to whether or not there was any alternative approach that was viewed with regards to the actual site plan? Because that's obviously one of the things before us this evening that we have to consider.
It appears, and again, yes, you are correct, Mr. Law, our city arborist would be the one to give more specifics on that. However, it does appear that the building itself is in the drip line of a red oak, which is also a diseased red oak, that the vocational school in the back portion, the drive-around portion of the vocational school, the very rear of that, there are two specimen trees, both poplars, which will be removed. There needs to be accessibility by the fire department to three sides of that building. Cutting it off, I don't know if that's really possible, but that might be something they could consider in shifting the site plan. And then the other one that is scheduled for removal, according to their plan, is a 24-inch red oak, which is pretty much in the, kind of the center of a parking area, parking aisle, and a drive aisle, so.
I appreciate that input. My question is, it relates to that as it would with any site plan that we review and is a matter of course, because we do have a tree ordinance that emphasizes the importance of saving specimen trees. I believe that one of the things that we speak about is whether or not there has been ample attempt to save those particular specimen trees, and whether or not there could still be consideration to that. So, short of having those alternative plans, that's the basis of my question. I don't know if there's been any alternative pursued.
That's probably something.
I could respond a while if that'll help you, ma'am.
If the applicant was to address that, that'd be fine.
Thank you. The answer to your question is yes. We did go through probably two or three different renditions of the drawing. The engineering and forestry staff were very diligent, and in fact, their design was modified a number of times to accommodate that. There are two trees that, while are characterized as being affected, there were really, there's no justification in removing those trees. It just means that the road does encroach somewhat into the drip line area. That's not to suggest that those trees may not die at a later date, but it doesn't justify just cutting them down. We will meet the tree ordinance, however, in terms of replacement trees. So, it, I guess the point I'm trying to make is that we did everything we could to come up with the best possible plan, given the circumstances.
So, just to clarify, is it two of those three that you're saying would not be removed initially, and/or those are two additional trees beyond the three that are cited as specimen trees for removal?
I don't have a plan in front of me, but.
Again, it just wasn't articulated in the analysis, and that's the reason for the question, so that we can be fair.
I stand corrected, there are the two trees, at one point, we did have the roadway working around them, but I stand corrected, that was a previous plan. It didn't work because we were required to provide. It didn't work because we were required to provide fire access around the building. So, it was a life safety issue. So, I stand corrected. I thought at one point those trees were protected to the extent that we did have the road, the driveway running through it, but because of the configuration, the greenhouse, and the shifting of the building and so forth, it wasn't possible to preserve those trees.
I guess I'd just leave a question back. As we consider this case, if we consider whether or not staff, and again, depending on the direction of this, these are some of the things that we do by law have to cover tonight, because we've got a site plan before us, is that I would ask that at least, depending on how this is considered as a land use issue, is that we evaluate whether or not there's some options there. Another question I had had to do with the fourth tower. It was mentioned early on that the fourth tower would not initially be proposed, and so my question for staff and/or the applicant is that if that fourth tower, I say tower, fourth, third-story building is not pursued, would land disturbance be stalled on that until such time as it was decided that that was actually necessary?
I'm looking at the topography map here, and it appears that the area where the fourth phase is, actually, again, the roadway has to run around the full section of the building, and therefore, the drive aisle goes all the way around all, what would be all four sections, including that future section. So, there will be some disturbance back there. It may not be to the degree of completing, totally padding out that area for the building, but there will be disturbance back there already from the drive aisle. So, I can't say that there won't be disturbance for that fourth phase. However, like I said, I don't know that it's complete padding out for that building.
Would it be safe to say that, from staff's perspective, that the applicant will meet the tree ordinance by...
Yes, sir.
...recomending?
Yes, sir. He won't be issued until he does.
I'm going to go ahead and say this is probably one of the toughest cases we've had. My head says one thing and follows the legalities and has one decision. My heart has a different decision, too, so it's a really tough one. I see both sides. I do realize that the applicant is a, this is a private business. It's up to them to do their due diligence. It's not up to the city or the community to make sure that they're successful. On the flip side, I'm sure they want to be successful. That's not our decision to make right now. What I do see in hearing both sides are that, well, probably no way to pull everything together, but there's probably some middle ground. What I hear from the opposition is there's a concern on the design and maybe the operation of this facility, which we are not making that decision tonight. But if I were the applicant, I also, if it was my business and I had my financial stake and risk involved, I would want to be open to the community to not only help me make it successful, but also have people that, you know, would recommend, would recommend the facility. And again, I certainly understand, and I've heard people talk, it's not a facility that everybody wants their loved one or child to be in. And, you know, I can say that, that, you know, look at Milton, there are apartments, there are townhomes, there are single-family homes, there's cabins in the woods, and just because you choose to, someone chooses to live in one, doesn't mean everybody wants to live there. So, as the applicant has said, if, you know, a family, a family member or a person with autism chooses their facility, they have the ability to walk, too. If they're not happy living there, they're not. Personally, I wish there was some way that we could take some of the opposition and use that in a positive way to help the owners of this property tweak it to make it more palatable and maybe come up with some compromises on the actual operation layout and the business model of it. I don't think, and I'll ask Mr. City Attorney, but I don't know that we have, other than it was stated, I believe, by Councilmember Bailey, and maybe have a stakeholder group or something, but is there, you know, our options are to defer, deny, or approve this. And I think the, from the legal standpoint, we probably favor more approving it. From the heart standpoint, it may push you to deny it. But is there any legal way to have somebody sit down at the table and help each other out so that it would be more palatable to both sides?
Mr. Mayor, that's always challenging in zonings, land use decisions that are like this, with sort of passionate positions on both sides. No government that I've ever worked for has been able to make people compromise, and that's no reflection on the individuals that are here. I don't know any of them, but I'm just saying, it's difficult to do that. Certainly, a deferral can be used as a basis to try and get both sides to sit down. I've certainly seen that, that a number of times, it may be that the applicant wants to do that. However, it may also be, and again, I'm speculating that the applicant feels they have tried to do that, I don't know, but they could take that position. I think the most productive use of time would be to ask the applicant if they feel like they have exhausted efforts at compromise, and if they say that they have, I think the applicant is entitled to a vote, yes or no, on the application. If the applicant believes there is some utility to a deferral, then that may be the way to try and reach some consensus, but I think that will rest in sort of the experience of the applicant and whether they think there's any benefit to additional time.
And I think it's one of those, it would only be by, more by sugar, not vinegar, that, you know, maybe the applicant would be willing to work with the community in order to have something that they feel is more positive about the facility. But I think you're right. So, with that, I'd like to ask the applicant if they, as our City Attorney said, that you feel you've exhausted all your due diligence, and that being a private business, you feel comfortable moving on? Or, you know, is there a way to work with our, some of our community members that are very passionate and have experience here, that you'd be open to sitting down with them and taking their input very seriously?
Mr. Mayor, I think what I would like to do, I think we have exhausted our due diligence through this process, but let me also point out that I don't think it's the city's job to pull both sides together. But what I've said from the beginning, and I will continue to say, and you have my word, I'll continue to work with and listen. I don't necessarily have to agree, because what I think you have realized tonight, there are two sides to this, and I'm more than willing to continue to work and be proactive and improve, and make this a project that works for the entire community. But what I've learned in the last few weeks is that there are definitely very definite opinions on how one should live and how one should continue to, the definition of community and the definition of inclusion are different in many people's minds. You have my word, and the words of the people here tonight, that I will remain proactive. I will work with them, but I don't feel it's fair for us to postpone this action. If the decision of this board is to deny us, then of course, we will have to deal with that. But if the decision is to approve us, I want you to know, as mayor and members of the City Council, that it's my solemn promise to continue to work with all those that are vested in the autism and mental disabilities community.
All right, Karen?
First of all, I want to thank all of you who've come out to speak tonight, and I know that this is a very emotional topic for a lot of people. I really appreciate what our Milton Disability Awareness Committee has done. They have definitely done a lot to make Milton unique in a wonderful way to the disability community. But this is a zoning issue that's before us, and I think we have to understand that. And two, I also, I'll be honest with you, I'm struggling with it. I have spoken to a lot of people who have children, young adults, that are autistic. And the ones I have spoken to have also, they would love to have this kind of facility in their community. And it's not an institution where people are put away, but it is a vocational school, a place for them to go and to get a training so that they can be included in a community, much more so than they might be able to otherwise if they did not live in an area close to it that would have this kind of training. And it's not for everybody. The spectrum of autism I know is so broad that you couldn't begin to find a facility or any kind of school that would, would help everyone in all the spectrum of it. But at the same time, I think there are probably a lot of people, and a lot of young adults that, you know, it's great if people would like to live at home. I can tell you, when my teenagers got to be a certain age, they were ready to be out on their own. There was a step to becoming independent. It's not going straight from living with mom and dad to living in an apartment all by yourself. They went through the dorm years and where they at least had some supervision and everything. But I really believe that part of our responsibility as parents is to help our kids become independent. And I believe if a facility like this is done properly, it can really help a lot of young people become more independent, get the kind of training that they need. And like I said, I know it's not for everybody, but I do believe that it can help certain young adults to achieve their life dreams, to become independent. And that being said, you know, I know that, I know there are a lot of people that don't share that same view, but this is a zoning decision. I really believe when it, when it comes down to it, I really hope you will all work together. I think the people in this audience have a tremendous amount of wealth and knowledge, much more so than any of us have on the subject, and I really hope you will sit down with them and hear them. But when we have to look at it, we have to look at it as a zoning decision, and I think that that's really what's before us now, not a business decision.
Bill?
I've pretty much kept silent during this whole discussion. I've learned, I've listened to each and every one of you, and I'm really encouraged to see this type of participation in our city. And I'd like to see participation like this in everything we do. I probably, more than everyone else here on council, have a greater interest. I've been involved in citizen advocacy for the last 15 years. I understand the principles, which you're talking about. I've lived them, I've preached them. I say again, as it's been repeated here several times, this is a zoning issue, it's not a special permit issue. I see this as an opportunity for people with this particular disability to be mainstreamed into our society and our culture. It's an option, it's an alternative, it's totally voluntary. From what I've seen with the tuition involved for this facility, I see it on a par with Emory University. What family out there or interested folks out there would not support something of this type? And the personal and financial commitment involved here is tremendous. And I'd do it for one of my children if this opportunity were available and if he had this particular disability. This is heart-wrenching, I know from your part here, because of what you believe in. But I think if we're going to be an inclusive community out here, I think we need to consider all options, the progressive options. There are new ideas out here on how to help people with particular disabilities. I see this as somewhat of a landmark use here in the City of Milton, and I think it would put us on the map, whether you believe it's in it or not. This is not a dumping ground, folks. This is not a Brook Run, Georgia Regional, or Millageville. It's a voluntary facility here to help put people back into society as contributing members of our society.
Anybody else? Joe?
Yeah, it was, I mean, this whole thing came about rather in an interesting way, because originally, it just looked like a zoning case, and then we started looking deeper into it, and I had some conversations with some of the folks on MDAC, and obviously, this was a little bit deeper than just zoning. The challenge that I see is when you have two sides that are as passionate as we have here, just trying to understand where the disconnect is. Why is one side so far over here, the other side so far over here? And most of the time, that comes down to communication. It comes down to understanding. It comes down to knowing everything that you need to know to make a decision. And so, the challenge that I would have is, you know, why didn't the applicant come in sooner, try to make connections with MDAC and the folks that are part of the community here? Because it's not very hard to find them. You know, we're a city that has a committee that's devoted to this subject, and, you know, it would have been easy for you to make contact here. And contact sooner would have meant more information disseminated, more understanding, and possibly could have kept some folks from speaking in opposition. At the same time, you know, here we are, we're a city that has a committee devoted to this, and I don't think this was on their radar screen either, until about a week and a half, two weeks ago. And so, the challenge I would have for the city staff is why didn't we make functioning committees within the city aware that this was something that was coming up and maybe would allow them to reach out sooner to the applicant and maybe build a bridge where they could understand exactly what this meant, exactly what was going on? Because I don't think it's as black and white as either side is trying to make it seem. And so, that's really where the challenge is. And I don't want to categorize this as just a zoning issue. It's more than that. But at the same time, it was a missed opportunity for communication. It was a missed opportunity for us to get these groups together and understand what was going on.
Okay. Ellen, do you have anything?
Yeah, I would just like to thank, I'm sorry if I'm not talking loud enough or talking too loud, but I can't hear out of this here because I've got a bad cold. But I just want to thank everyone who came tonight, the people that are in support of this and people who are in opposition of this. This is a very difficult issue. I had no idea that it was going to be this difficult, as the mayor said when the issue was first brought to our attention. However, I don't begin to even know what it would be like to have a child with a disability and to know the type of things that you all go through on a day-to-day basis. So, I'm glad you came to help us understand those types of things. You know, one of the hard or the difficult things about this job is that we have to make decisions that are in the best interest of taxpayers, not only in the health and welfare of all citizens, but, you know, good use of funds and good use of taxpayer money. And the decisions that we make could very well end up in court challenged, and that money, with your taxpayer's money, would have to be used to defend those lawsuits. So, that's the reason we keep coming back to the fact that this is a zoning decision. And it's not to say that there aren't definitely human aspects to this decision. There definitely are, but we are bound by the law in making our decision. But in light of that, I would, you know, echo the sentiments of my colleagues in hoping that these two groups can get together. And, you know, I agree with you, Councilmember Longborey, that I think there are some missed opportunities for communication here, and I, you know, from what I'm hearing the applicant say, this, the vision of this community is very different than what I'm hearing the opposition think as the vision of this particular development. And so, I'm hoping the two of them can get together and hopefully come to a meeting of the minds, so to speak, with regard to the vision of this development.
Okay. And I'm going to open up for motions. I do want to say one thing. It's, again, this is a couple of points, as we've been talking the last couple of minutes. Obviously, and the timing of if this is approved or denied, but there's still time, no matter if it's approved, there's still time to talk and for the applicant and our community to get together. You know, by the time the facility's built and whatnot, that'll be quite a while, and there's a lot of processes. So, it's not that we're at the end of the road there. I mean, there's still time, still in the design phase and whatnot. This is just a zoning. There's still time for discussion and maybe questions and to get some information. And the only other thing, I know Councilmember Tarp made a comment about, you know, what people have to go through with, if they have a child with a disability, and, you know, the one thing I do know, every one that I know, and I've got a lot of friends, I know a lot of people that have, quote, "a child" or someone in their family with a disability, but it's not a disability. To those people, it's a blessing. So, I think we just need to, you know, try to do the best we can, hopefully. So I think we just need to, you know, try to do the best we can, hopefully this applicant will do that, to make it a place that people will want to come and live, if that's what suits them. I kind of look at it as like my child going off to college, you know, living in the dorm, and, you know, there's no kitchen in the dorm, and it's a congregant group, but at some point, she'll move on, and hopefully that's the same way that this facility can do. So anyways, I would just like to, again, promote, as some of the other councilmembers say, promote some discussion, and I'm going to open up for a motion.
Before we open up for a motion, can I get staff to, under the conditions of approval, could you verify there, it says in the first paragraph, and the reason I'm asking this is because I know we'll probably be quoting this section, and I want to make sure it's correct, and maybe I'm missing something? Conditional use permit for a special school, section 64-1820. Could you verify that that is the correct citation of our zoning ordinance for a special use permit for a school? I'm looking at it as a landscaping business. I want to make sure we're quoting the right section.
64, I'm sorry?
It says 64-1820, which is found on CD 64, 242.
Of the staff report.
Conditions of approval, back end.
It's the first page of the recommended conditions.
Maybe the third page in the back.
It's actually 64-1831, school, private, or special. Thank you.
I was getting a little bit of confusion about Planning Commission slash DRB slash staff recommendations on the percentages and the colors, the color palette. If you could just maybe clarify that just a little bit more, because it seems like there's perhaps three different recommendations, but we, at the end, we all kind of agree, maybe?
Yes, sir, it does seem that way, and it probably really is that way a little bit.
Okay.
The DRB gives comment, their commentary asked for additional brick and stone on the popouts, the same thing the Planning Commission asked for.
Additional to the 65 percent, so if we could...
Right, right, to try to bring that percentage up. They also liked the colors that were presented. Again, they're not a fully recommending body, but they did give commentary as a courtesy review. The Community Development Department, as staff, we also recommended approval conditional for the rezoning and use permit with denial of the variance requests, which were for the brick and stone, as we discussed, as well as the colors.
Specifically, you deny, you have recommended denial because it just didn't meet the letter of the law?
Didn't meet the letter of the law, that's correct, sir. And then the Planning Commission recommended approval on all three parts, including the three-part variance. The Planning Commission did also recommend that the variance be approved, and specifically that the front facade be articulated with 65 percent brick or natural stone up through those gables.
So do you, do you support what the Planning Commission has recommended, even though it's not exact letter of what our zoning resolution is, you still support the concepts and all behind what the Planning Commission has recommended?
Yes, ma'am, we don't have any other disagreement with that.
Bill?
I sense that I'm not the only one who's confused. On page two in the box at the top of the page...
Yes, sir.
Does that capture all of the terms, conditions, that have been mutually agreed upon with the applicant?
It does, with the exception of part one of the variance condition, requiring that the brick or natural stone be brought up through those gables at the front of the buildings.
So that's the only variation from what's here in the box that would constitute a motion in capturing all of the terms that have been talked about?
Yes, sir, that's the only addition.
Okay. Are we voting on each section separately, or do we, are we grouping them all together?
We would group them together, in one motion. I mean, you could always make an amendment. Julie?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm still probably a little bit unclear with regards to the DRB. As I read the line from the Design Review Board, it says that they want to encourage that 75 percent. I hear that some people may have a different perspective as to whether or not 65 gets close enough. And what I haven't heard is why it is that that variance is a requirement, why an additional 10 percent couldn't be met, especially given that we had a Highway 9 Design Guideline Group. I mean, we're saying that our committees matters, that they matter. We had a committee just a week ago that said they wanted our development standards, including those overlay standards, to be met. So I just wasn't clear, and maybe staff can speak to that, as to why that 75 percent couldn't be met.
I don't know that, that I can tell you that it can't be met, obviously, and that is why the staff technically recommended denial. However, aesthetically, it may not make that much difference at this point. Again, like I said...
My concern is that we not undermine those standards that are in place...
Understood.
...that continue to be reinforced, in particular in the Highway 9 Deerfield area, but also throughout Milton. So I just ask that for consideration. The other thing I ask that this body consider is that the specimen trees, because this is still conceptual in nature and it might be modified, that the specimen trees that are identified as possible removal, that there be consideration that does not necessarily be presumed to need to come out, but that there would be some opportunity for revisiting that with staff's involvement. The second would be that, I think we heard the applicant say in response to my request, that there be a stakeholder group and/or a committee, that that be part of the discussion here, and that we not leave that to chance, depending on where this goes. I think that we do have an opportunity and obligation to ensure that, because prior to two weeks ago, that these groups hadn't come together, I think it is incumbent on us that we do what we can to help ensure that those groups come together to have dialogue and to make sure that's part of how this proceeds regardless. So those are just my comments prior to any motion that somebody might put forward.
Bill?
Lynn?
Yes, sir.
I can't write fast enough. Could you give me the verbiage on the stone issue there, item one, carry the brick?
To the gables?
To the front of gables.
Yes, sir.
To the front of the gable.
Okay.
Okay, based on that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to put forward a motion to approve petition number RZ 10-05 slash U 10-01 slash VC 10-03. It's motion to rezon from C1 Community Business and ONI Office Institutional to C1 Community Business with a use permit to construct a special school or transition vocational school for adults and at least 18 years in age with autism, and an assisted living facility for autistic adults with 72 studios. The applicant is also requesting a three-part concurrent variance. Item number one, allow the exterior wall materials of all non-residential buildings and townhouses, duplex and multifamily buildings, to consist of a minimum of 65 percent in lieu of 75 percent per vertical wall plane of the following: brick or natural stone from section 64-1095P for the assisted living facility, and further to carry the brick to the front of the gable. Item two, allow accent building materials for all non-residential buildings and also townhouse, duplex and multifamily units, to be limited to a maximum of 35 percent in lieu of 25 percent brick, tile, non-reflective glass, natural stone, and weathered polished or fluted face with fluted, split face, or broken face finish, Portland cement plaster and lap systems, architectural, either precast or tilt-up, concrete, fluted or with exposed finish, or hardy plank, section 64-1095Q for the assisted living facility. Item number three, allow the following exterior siding colors as produced by Cabot Solid Stains to be permitted: Napa Vine, Newport Blue, Brickstone Colonial Yellow from section 64-1095T for the assisted living facility.
I'll second, and Councilmember Lusk, can I add one other thing on one, where it said brick up to the front of the gables, can we add brick or stone? Because I believe the plan actually shows some stone on there.
I would agree with that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Get right into the record.
I have a question for Councilmember Lusk. Councilmember Lusk, I heard you read a lot of what you read in there. I'm confused as far as what your motion is. Are you, are you basically wanting the approval of the application in its entirety with the recommended conditions of staff? Because what you just read didn't include all that, and I want to make sure we included all the recommendations of staff for the recommended conditions.
From my understanding, page two in the box section is what has been approved, applied for by the applicant.
Because there's also, there's use restrictions as, as conditions of approval that staff has recommended. Item number one, there's some things that the owner should abide by, 2A, 3A, 3C is what you read, but then there's also dedication improvements that are necessary. Item number four, and then there's five, which deals with stormwater management facilities.
I think if you'd allow me to interject...
Yeah, I think I can help make some heads or tails of this. There's two different places to look in the package that you have.
One is on page two, and everything's in a box. At the end of the package that you have is a page that looks like this, that says conditions of approval on it. I'm certainly not trying to suggest that you do approve, just that if you were to make that motion to approve, Councilmember Lusk, everything you read is included in this document, it's at the back page, plus some stuff.
With the exception that section 64-1820...
That's why I asked the question, if it was all captured in the box on page two.
It is not, in answer to your question, it is not. It is all captured in the conditions of approval, which were at the end of your package, with one exception in that 64-1820 should be amended to 64-1831. And anything else you all might choose to add or not add tonight, but if you're, if you're going to make a motion to approve it based on the conditions that are listed in the package, I appreciate that you referenced this page instead of page two.
Okay. I changed my motion to approve this application based on the verbiage on pages 23, 24, and 25 of 30 with the stated corrections that the city manager has offered.
Okay, before you get us, hold on a second there for me, just for a second. This is the...
Different pages, Lord.
This is the absolutely most recent.
Yes, conditions of approval.
Mr. Mayor, just for purposes of the record, just the record reflect, the original motion and second that was made by Councilmember Lusk and seconded by Councilmember Thurman, that has been withdrawn?
Withdrawn.
I have it withdrawn.
Thank you, just want to clarify that.
In the process of Councilmember Lusk making another motion, with clarification from staff.
Sorry, I'm comfortable with it. I am comfortable with that captures what I think I've heard is concerned.
Okay, are you clear on that motion? We have a motion by Councilmember Lusk, a second by Councilmember Thurman. Is there any discussion from council on this motion? Julie?
I would just ask the maker of the motion and that, Councilmember Thurman, also just consider whether or not we could simply ask staff to work with the applicant as it relates to those three specimen trees, because the site plan is conceptual, and I think we also need to state for the record which site plan it is that we're looking at. And then secondly, whether or not the applicant in working with staff would be willing to work with the stakeholder group, because I think we heard from the applicant that indeed they would be willing to do so post this evening. And again, based on the commentary that we've had, I would ask for that consideration. It's not an obligation, but it encourages these groups to work together and have dialogue.
I think they've agreed to do that, but that wouldn't be part of the actual motion. But you did want to include the front gable of the...
The percentages.
That's in page 24.
And I was just actually requesting that it be a part of the condition that, with that discussion, to simply say that, yes, indeed, post any decision this evening, that staff and the applicant would work together to proactively have a stakeholder committee. So that was my request, is to see that that would happen, as opposed to chance, but it would just be confirming your commitment to do so.
Up to the motion maker.
Call a question.
Okay, who you?
Can I assume that to be a no?
That's covered during the normal course of review, so. And they've always...
We have a call, a question, we need to vote on call and question. Cap ask, got a request to call the question. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous, okay?
Motion second.
So, got a motion, we got a motion by Councilmember Lusk, a second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Would, would the council, we'd like to take a five-minute break?
I know, I need one.
All right, we need to make a motion.
Uh, just, you can.
Okay.
That officer looks like he needs some rest.
I was just in there with a few more of those chicken nuggets.
How's that vest feeling?
Alan had taken away from the desk.
I thought you were on training table.
Alan, how long does chicken thing have to sit out?
They're different. Five to training table.
That's what, they've been out there since four, so.
Oh, really?
They're about 30 minutes out of the day.
So on a diet, you better get rid of them.
Can't just zap them in the microwave and make them better again? Scrub them down with a mop? Yeah, boy.
He said that four hours.
Uh-oh. They've been out there longer than four.
Yeah, don't go for seconds right now.
No, 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 no. No, 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 no.
All right. Still waiting on Julie. It's the restroom.
It's going to take me a while to read this one, if you want to convene.
All right. Here you are. All right. Ready to convene. Will the city clerk please send the next zoning item?
The next zoning item is U-10-02 VC-10-04. One-three-one-two-zero Arnold Mill Road by Frank Schaefer, The Landscape Group Incorporated for use permit for a landscaping business, Section 64-1820, and a four-part concurrent variance to the existing buildings. One, beginning at a point in the west property line at the northwestern property corner to reduce a portion of the 50-foot buffer and 10-foot improvement setback to zero feet, beginning at a point on the west property line at the northwestern property corner for a total distance of 126 feet, to a point on the west property line located 126 feet south of the northwestern property corner. Section 64-11 41.3a. Two, beginning at a point on the east property line located 40 feet south of the northeastern property corner to reduce a portion of the 50-foot buffer and 10-foot improvement setback be reduced to a 30-foot undisturbed buffer with a 10-foot improvement setback for a total distance of 98 feet to a point on the east property line located 138 feet south of the northeastern property corner. Section 64-11 41.3a. And, three, to reduce the 50-foot building setback to 44.09, to a 44.09-foot setback for the warehouse along the east property line, Section 64-1820b3. And four, to reduce the 50-foot building setback to 47, to a 47.58-foot setback for the warehouse and a 28.25-foot setback for the steps to the office deck along the west property line, Section 64-1820b3. This is agenda item number 10-1280, first presentation on November the first, 2010. Lynn Tully.
The subject site does include 1.7 acres. This acreage is, um, it has some challenges. It has at least two streams on the property, some topo issues, as well as the existing 800-square-foot house, which is used as an office, and two, and a two-story 6,000, 600 square-foot warehouse. It is located within the agricultural forestry and mining land use designation on the partial plan update. The request is for a special use permit, and therefore the, um, use permit considerations have to be considered and reviewed. A, whether the proposed use is consistent with the land use or economic development plans adopted by the mayor and city council. The requested use permit is inconsistent with the intent of the City of Milton partial plan update. And based on the applicant's need for concurrent variances, it does not provide for appropriate transition of uses. B, compatibility with land uses and zoning districts in the vicinity of the property for which the use permit is proposed. The proposed landscaping business is not compatible with land uses in the vicinity based on the need for reduction of undisturbed buffers and required building setbacks for the use permit that will provide the necessary protection of the adjacent properties. Staff has noted that the applicant made a similar request for a use permit on the subject site and was denied by the City of Milton mayor and city council on October 19th, 2009. Oh, excuse me, on December 17th, the Milton city council denied the request for landscaping business with concurrent variances. Further, whether the proposed use may violate local, state, and/or federal statutes, ordinances, or regulations governing land development. Some disturbance has occurred within the 50-foot undisturbed buffer area, as well as the 25-foot state buffer. Action has been taken concerning this disturbance of the 25-foot state buffer and has been adjudicated in court. The 50-foot buffer also needs additional revegetation to buffer standards. D, the effect of the proposed use on traffic flow, vehicular, and pedestrian along adjoining streets. The proposed use does not anticipate generating a significant increase in traffic. However, if the petition is approved, we do recommend that only one entrance be utilized at the western side of the property based on site distance requirements along Arnold Mill Road. The location and number of off-street parking spaces, the applicant is required to provide a minimum of three parking spaces per 1,000 square feet, and one of office space, and one space per 2,000 square feet of warehouse space. The applicant is also required to locate his parking and storage of work vehicles outside the minimum 60-foot front yard building setback. The site plan does indicate seven parking spaces that meet the requirements. Four parking are located outside the 60-foot front yard building setback. And in addition, the site plan indicates a handicap space on a concrete parking pad in front of the warehouse where a telephone for customer calls is to be installed. The amount and location of open space, the applicant's site plan indicates approximately half of the subject site is undeveloped. I would note that the open space is located behind the stream, which bisects the property approximately in the middle. In addition, there is, um, another stream running north-south. Sufficient open space will be provided based on the applicant's variance requests, oh, excuse me, sufficient space will not be provided based on the applicant's variance request to reduce the buffers. Staff does note that the existing warehouse is located within the 25-foot city stream buffer and the 25-foot non-imperious setback is grandfathered, but it does eliminate, excuse me, eliminate possible open space.
Okay, if I could, we'll start in thirty seconds. That officer looks like he needs some rest.
I was just in there with a few more of those chicken nuggets.
How's that vest feeling?
Alan, how long does chicken thing have to sit out?
They're different.
Four hours. That's what, they've been out there since four, so.
Oh, really?
They're about thirty minutes out of the day.
So on a diet, you better get rid of them.
Can't just zap them in the microwave and make them better again? Scrub them down with a mop? Yeah, boy.
Uh-oh. They've been out there longer than four.
Yeah, don't go for seconds right now.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
All right, still waiting on Julie. At the restroom.
It's gonna take me a while to read this one if you wanna convene.
All right, here we are. All right, ready to convene. Will the city clerk please send the next zoning item?
The next zoning item is U ten dash zero two, V C ten dash zero four. One three, one two zero Arnold Mill Road by Frank Schaefer, the Landscape Group Incorporated, for use permit for a landscaping business, section sixty-four dash eighteen twenty, and a four-part concurrent variance to the existing buildings. One, beginning at a point in the west property line at the northwestern property corner to reduce a portion of the fifty-foot buffer and ten-foot improvement setback to zero feet, beginning at a point on the west property line at the northwestern property corner for a total distance of one hundred and twenty-six feet, to a point on the west property line located one hundred and twenty-six feet south of the northwestern property corner, section sixty-four dash eleven, forty-one point three point A. Two, beginning at a point on the east property line located forty feet south of the northeastern property corner to reduce a portion of the fifty-foot buffer and ten-foot improvement setback be reduced to a thirty-foot undisturbed buffer with a ten-foot improvement setback for a total distance of ninety-eight feet to a point on the east property line located one hundred and thirty-eight feet south of the northeastern property corner, section sixty-four dash eleven, forty-one point three point A. And, three, to reduce the fifty-foot building setback to forty-four point zero nine, to a forty-four point zero nine foot setback for the warehouse along the east property line, section sixty-four dash one eight two zero B three. And four, to reduce the fifty-foot building setback to forty-seven, to a forty-seven point five eight foot setback for the warehouse and a twenty-eight point two five foot setback for the steps to the office deck along the west property line, section sixty-four dash one eight two zero B three. This is agenda item number ten dash one two eight zero, first presentation on November the first, two thousand and ten. Lynn Tully.
The subject site does include one point seven acres. This acreage is, it has some challenges. It has at least two streams on the property, some topo issues, as well as the existing eight-hundred-square-foot house, which is used as an office, and two, and a two-story six-hundred, six-thousand-six-hundred-square-foot warehouse. It is located within the agricultural forestry and mining land use designation on the partial plan update. The request is for a special use permit, and therefore the use permit considerations have to be considered and reviewed. A, whether the proposed use is consistent with the land use or economic development plans adopted by the mayor and city council. The requested use permit is inconsistent with the intent of the City of Milton partial plan update. And based on the applicant's need for concurrent variances, it does not provide for appropriate transition of uses. B, compatibility with land uses and zoning districts in the vicinity of the property for which the use permit is proposed. The proposed landscaping business is not compatible with land uses in the vicinity based on the need for reduction of undisturbed buffers and required building setbacks for the use permit that would provide the necessary protection of the adjacent properties. Staff has noted that the applicant made a similar request for a use permit on the subject site and was denied by the City of Milton mayor and city council on October nineteenth, two thousand and nine. Oh, excuse me, on December seventeenth, the Milton city council denied the request for landscaping business with concurrent variances. Further, whether the proposed use may violate local, state, and/or federal statutes, ordinances, or regulations governing land development. Some disturbance has occurred within the fifty-foot undisturbed buffer area, as well as the twenty-five-foot state buffer. Action has been taken concerning this disturbance of the twenty-five-foot state buffer and has been adjudicated in court. The fifty-foot buffer also needs additional revegetation to buffer standards. D, the effect of the proposed use on traffic flow, vehicular, and pedestrian along adjoining streets. The proposed use does not anticipate generating a significant increase in traffic. However, if the petition is approved, we do recommend that only one entrance be utilized at the western side of the property based on site distance requirements along Arnold Mill Road. The location and number of off-street parking spaces. The applicant is required to provide a minimum of three parking spaces per one thousand square feet, and one of office space, and one space per two thousand square feet of warehouse space. The applicant is also required to locate his parking and storage of work vehicles outside the minimum sixty-foot front yard building setback. The site plan does indicate seven parking spaces that meet the requirements. Four parking are located outside the sixty-foot front yard building setback. And in addition, the site plan indicates a handicap space on a concrete parking pad in front of the warehouse where a telephone for customer calls is to be installed. The amount and location of open space. The applicant's site plan indicates approximately half of the subject site is undeveloped. I would note that the open space is located behind the stream, which bisects the property approximately in the middle. In addition, there is another stream running north-south. Sufficient open space will be provided based on the applicant's variance requests, oh, excuse me, sufficient space will not be provided based on the applicant's variance request to reduce the buffers. Staff does note that the existing warehouse is located within the twenty-five-foot city stream buffer and the twenty-five-foot non-imperious setback is grandfathered, but it does eliminate, excuse me, eliminate possible open space to provide a more consistent development with adjacent properties. Protective screening. The request for buffer variances does not provide sufficient screening for the adjacent properties along portions of the east and west property lines. Staff does note that the applicant intends to remove the concrete along the frontage near the east property line and replant to buffer standards for a distance of forty feet from the northeast corner of the property. The applicant is also requesting a reduction in the undisturbed buffer along the western property line to zero feet for a distance of one hundred and twenty-six feet to allow the relocated entrance. And it is staff's opinion that the proposed use is too intense for this particular property based in part by the amount of equipment described in section H and the apparent lack of screening. H, hours and manners of operation. The applicant does state that the hours of operation are from seven-thirty a.m. to six p.m. The business is a full landscape maintenance and design company. Equipment consists of mowers, leak blowers, edgers, trimmers, et cetera, which are stored in box trucks, and the business has two such trucks for lawn maintenance, two landscape trucks, two mid-sized pickup trucks for sales and service, one Bobcat, and one box trailer. Streetscape lighting. At the time of the issuance of a City of Milton business license, the site shall be in compliance with the Northwest Fulton Overlay District regarding outdoor lighting. The applicant currently does not have any additional plans for lighting on the property. Ingress and egress to the property. The applicant's site plan indicates that one curb cut on Arnold Mill Road, indicates one curb cut on Arnold Mill Road, and staff notes that there are two existing entrances on the property, and the applicant proposes to close one of these entrances due to the high volume of traffic on Arnold Mill Road. If this petition is approved, staff also has requested to require the entrance on the east be closed to provide ingress and egress on the most western portion of the property. Again, there's a site plan analysis included in your report. I would move along to the variance request, parts one and two. The first part is a reduction of the buffer along the western property line to reduce a portion of the fifty-foot buffer and ten-foot improvement setback to zero feet for approximately one hundred and twenty-six feet. And part two, along the eastern property line, to reduce a portion of the fifty-foot buffer and ten-foot improvement setback to be reduced to a thirty-foot undisturbed buffer with a ten-foot improvement setback for a total distance of ninety-eight feet. It is staff's opinion that the proposed use on the subject site with the requested reduction in buffers is too intensive for the property adjacent to agricultural and residential uses, as discussed within the use permit considerations. In addition, it is staff's opinion that the need for the buffer reductions are caused by the applicant's request to operate a landscaping business, and that does not comply with the zoning ordinance, as well as not complying with all the variance considerations contained in section sixty-four dash one eight eight three. And then, V C ten oh four, parts three and four, reducing the fifty-foot building setback to a forty-four point zero nine foot setback for the warehouse along the eastern property line. And part four, reducing that fifty-foot building setback to a forty-seven point five eight foot setback for the warehouse and a twenty-eight point twenty-five foot setback for the steps to the office deck along the western property line. Although the two buildings that require reduction setbacks are existing structures, by requesting the landscape business, the buildings are not in compliance with use permit standards. It further demonstrates that the proposed use is too intensive for the property and does not provide adequate setbacks to adjacent A G one properties. Again, staff is recommending denial. This has been reviewed by all other city departments involved, and has had a public involvement plan. The planning commission heard this request on October twenty-sixth, two thousand and ten, and did recommend conditional approval to the use permit, U ten dash zero two, and conditional approval to the variance, parts one through four, variance V C dash ten, excuse me, V C ten dash zero, zero four. And the recommended conditions are included in your packet. I'd be happy to read those if necessary. Are there questions?
Any questions, Karen?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know it states that the, both the residential house and the warehouse were built prior to Milton becoming a city. Do we know if they were permitted within Fulton County, and when exactly that warehouse was built?
We believe that the warehouse did receive a permit. Can you pull the file? We'll look and find out when that permit actually was issued. I believe it is in the file. Are there any other questions in the meantime?
Yes, anyone else?
Two thousand and two.
Was it in the stream buffer at the time it was permitted?
I would presume so, ma'am. I don't know when it was final, but I assume it was final, obviously, being built in two thousand and two before we became a city, and I'm gonna assume that they got a certificate of at least completion.
I just didn't know if there were any changes to the stream buffer requirements between the time that was originally built and when it became a city.
The additional fifty-foot for the city would have been added by the city when we enacted our stream buffer requirements, but other than that...
Is this in violation regardless of that change?
But it was in violation of the twenty-five...
It was permitted by Fulton County in violation of their existing...
Believe so, ma'am, or at least was built in violation of their existing, although not, it was shown on that site plan, I couldn't tell you.
Okay, Bill?
Lynn, the city fined the owner, what, about a year ago, for a lack of slope stabilization? Can you tell me how that's progressed?
That was tried in court, and was, he was issued a fine. It was, excuse me, not tried, but heard in court, and he was issued a fine, which has been paid. Remediation to that twenty-five-foot buffer has been done, however, some of the vegetation has died, and so there needs to be some additional planning. And in addition to that, our fifty-foot buffer needs some additional planning to meet our current requirements.
Is that part of the conditions?
Yes, sir, it is in the conditions, and that would be condition three H, provide a landscape plan including a buffer mitigation plan for the areas of the stream buffer that have been disturbed.
That includes those areas that were subject to fine?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, Julie?
Just enter speaking about fines, because you also speak to the code enforcement issue at hand with regards to the fact that this was denied by the same council.
Yes, ma'am, there was citation issued as well for this site by code enforcement for continuing to conduct the use. It went to the judge, and the judge has basically stayed the decision until this is heard and completed, so.
And was there any time during, following the denial of this council, that there was compliance?
No, no, ma'am, not to our knowledge. We believe that he's been in business at this location the entirety of the time.
Since the denial?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, if there's no questions, staff, I'll open up the public hearing and ask to hear from those in support of this application.
Mayor, we have two public comment cards tonight, both from the applicant, so those are the only cards that we have related to this agenda.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Don Rolater, my address, eleven six sixty Alpharetta Highway, Roswell, Georgia, three double oh seven six. Together with David Burry, who's a principal in David Burry Engineers and Surveyors, is that working okay?
Yeah.
I'm here tonight on behalf of Frank Schaefer, who's the owner of this property. Frank Schaefer bought this property in May of two thousand and seven, paid three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for it, and launched his landscape business, put everything he had in it, and went to work. What I want you to understand, if I don't understand anything else, is that he has not touched one bit of the structure on this property since the day that he bought it. The house was existing, the building behind it was existing, and his experience was that people stopped him along the street after he got in there and thanked him for cleaning and shaping the property up so that he could proceed. It's an interesting piece of property. The traffic there is terrible. In the mornings, inbound from Cherokee County, stacks past the bridge at this county line. In the afternoon, outbound, stacks from Crab Apple on the outbound side. The structure's eight hundred square feet, where the house is. It's a tough piece. What he's asking you to do is to permit him a permit for his landscape business before it was permitted as a general contracting business, and when he bought it, that was the nature of the operation on the property. It sounds awfully confusing to ask for four variances. I'm gonna have David Burry explain those variances to you in a minute, but what those four variances do is make this property legal as it sits. They make no additions to any bit of the structure. When Mr. Burry finally analyzed this, he just rubbed his head and said, holy cow, all four corners were out of whack. These four variances are the minimum requirements to make this work. We sat down, had excellent conversations with staff, went over this from A to Z, to determine what it would take to make this property function legally if you choose to approve these variances and this use permit. That's how we got here. Make sure that we weren't lost. We sent out a hundred and sixty-four letters to nearby property owners, soliciting their input, telling them what we were gonna do. We had a meeting here, nobody came. We got one response by telephone to the hundred and sixty-four letters. A fellow called my office and said, where is this? And we told him, he said, doesn't bother me. It surprises me, because I lived on Cox Road thirteen years, I know a lot of people there. My friends didn't even call me and ask me what we were up to, but that's the nature of this. The fact is that the property is out of compliance with the standards that exist. We have gone through the procedures required by the city to see if we can put it in compliance. What I would like to do before I summarize now is to let Mr. Burry take a moment with you, and to the extent you need it, explain what those four variances are, and if you got it quick, just look at him and say, we got it. Anyway, let me turn it over to David.
Thank you, Don. David Burry, eleven six sixty Alpharetta Highway, Suite one hundred, Roswell, Georgia. I'm the president of David A. Burry Engineers and Surveyors. What we have here is the City of Milton, they brought this property into the city, they inherited it from Fulton County, not one mistake, but about five mistakes. We have a building in twenty-five-foot state water stream buffer. I think I know how that happened, but Milton would not have known that when they brought it in. We have a building, house built in a front yard setback. We have a warehouse that's built in the stream buffer, as well as the corners of the house, and the warehouse are within the confines of the side yard setbacks required by A G ones other. In the package that we submitted on sheet one of three, I would point to this if I didn't know. Please let me know. This is a boundary survey of the property and topography. You all heard this a year ago. The applicant's drawing, which was done by a surveyor, showed only one creek on the property that moved from the east to the west. When I came in and met with staff, I met with Robin and Lynn and Jimmy Sanders, and we sat down and said, well, we're gonna have to come up with some buffer averaging, and my intention was to use the back of the property and declare that a full buffer for stream buffer averaging. But come to find out, and a few people did their survey, there was another creek on the property that no one knew about. That then took the buffer averaging away, and that that requires its own stream buffer, because it also has stream flows. If you look at the piece of property and go to this left window detail, when you apply the front yard setback, the two side yard setbacks required by zoning, and the rear yard setback, only twenty-two percent of the property had a buildable area on it. When you take that and hold those and freeze that layer of those setbacks from the rear, the front, and the two sides, and you apply the stream buffer, this green box, it goes from this quality to this quality right here, which is a three-and-a-half percent site buildable area on a one-point-seven-acre tract. Now, why would a person buy one-point-seven acres if only three-and-a-half percent were available? It's hard to understand until you think about it. He hired some engineers and surveyors to do his survey. They obviously did not inform him of these setbacks. Some attorney closed this property for him, they did not inform him of what he was buying. He's in the landscape business, he's not a lawyer, he's not an engineer, and he's not a surveyor. Someone, he wasn't misinformed, he was uninformed, no one ever told him. When he brought this project to me, and when I first looked at it and started applying the setbacks and the buffers, I realized very quickly, this doesn't have an answer. What I tried to do on his behalf, and staff worked with me very well on this, is we didn't come in and ask for you all to forgive this entire setback on the west boundary line, and we didn't ask for forgiveness. We've only isolated the distances on the two property lines as reflected on this flat. On this side, we started forty feet back, and then we run it for the distance that we only need to set the buffers so it can protrude upon the bill. On this side was the same thing. We didn't go to the full apartment, we're only asking for relief where the buildings were already built, permitted by Fulton County, C O. by Fulton County. The front yard setback, the house that intrude, what we've done is, we've realized that we need more area to be planting in in order to mitigate this problem. Staff asked us, and we agreed, to remove his circular drive on the right-hand side so we have more area to plant on the property to mitigate the damages. If you go back and say, well, exactly what else could have been done? I don't know that there are any other answers. In the future, I will tell you that if any of these adjacent properties becomes zoned other than A G one, then the variances that we're asking for tonight would be somewhat relieved, depending on what they might be zoned, because they wouldn't be a subtrusive distance and setbacks off the property lines. The grandfathering of these buildings came in through Fulton County, Milton had nothing to do with it, my client was misinformed. We're not asking you for anything other than the minimum amount of relief that we need to make these buildings conform to the setbacks such that you all could issue him a building permit, excuse me, a business permit, business license, and that's why we're here tonight. Thank you.
Let me very briefly wrap this up. We accept all the conditions that have been proposed by the staff should you choose to approve this application. The response to the question of what was done to bring the property in compliance after the first hearing, nothing was done because he was not allowed to do that, restriction on the property. When he went to do the cleanup Mr. Sanders asked him to do, he put his Bobcat in there to get it done, and then he got cited for putting equipment in a stream buffer. Honest mistake, but nonetheless, it's a catch twenty-two. You're in trouble, but you can't get out. The last point I'd like to make for you is if you approve this, you eliminate a concrete driveway, a fence, and a sign, you enhance the landscaping and buffers, you relocate a dumpster, and you install a handicap parking space, and you keep six people in business and an ongoing business here, I don't think it's a residential area, and I don't think it would be a fitting house for someone should this not be approved. It would have to be a rental house as it sits. That's busiest two-lane road I can think of in the City of Milton, and that's why we're here. If you have questions, please ask them to us, otherwise we'll reserve our remaining time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other comment cards?
We do not.
Okay, all right. So this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll open up the floor of questions, both either to staff or to the applicant. I'm gonna tell you, first, I'm gonna start out and tell you my thoughts on this. We have three options. One, we can deny it, one, we can defer it, one, we can approve it. As long as we've been going through this, I don't think deferring it anymore is, I don't think there's anything to be gained by that. Of course, I look at it, and there's absolutely no way that we would approve if this were being proposed to us to build, or to put these structures on this piece of property, with no way we would approve it. Sure, the applicant, if he had it to do it again, probably would have never bought it. But at this point, I'm gonna look at it as though, where we are today and where we're moving in the future. And that being said, again, if we approve this, I don't see anything more, anything negative, I'm looking at it from the city's perspective, our taxpayers' perspective. If we approve it, there's not gonna be more damage, there's not gonna be any more encroachment on any buffers. And the positive side is that there's some improvements that are recommended that the applicant could, would have to do. And it would also, the property does look a lot better than it used to, and it would continue to look better with the landscape improvements, and it'd be a viable business and a tax base for the city. If we deny it, the reason I wouldn't support that is, the only thing that happens then is that we have a vacant piece of property, we have a, put someone out of business, and I don't see it doing any good for the city. And as I'm talking to the planning commission, you know, and as... And as I'm talking to the planning commission, you know, and as Mr. Burry or Mr. Rollator stated, these buffers, as this area develops, the buffer issues will probably go way down the road. So, again, I'm just going to open it up and say that I would be in support of approving this with staff's recommendations, just because I think in the interest of the city, that's the best way to go. Karen?
Mayor, I'll have to agree with you in the fact that there's no need to defer it because there's no additional information that we are missing in order to make a decision. If we deny it, I'm not real sure what the property can be used for, other than an 800-square-foot single-family house that's got a huge warehouse that I don't know what you would do in it, but it looks like it probably could cause trouble. And any other business that would come into it would have to be right back before us requesting the same variances, correct? Almost any other business would.
They'd come for you as a rezoning to probably a commercial use. See, and this is a landscape business. You can conduct that in AG1 with a special use.
But a, but a commercial, yeah. But even if it was rezoned commercial, then it would still have to, because it's adjacent to AG1 properties, it would still have to have the same variances and everything.
It'd have to have a lot the same, but buffer variances, yes, ma'am.
So it would be pretty much the same thing. They would have to come back before us. So it really looks like, you're right. We would absolutely, we would never approve this to be built going forward. But at the same time, it's already there. It's not a good situation. But I don't know what else we do to make it any better.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions, comments? Bill?
So we have the same comments. This is an opportunity to improve on an undesirable situation. And I think in the interest of promoting business in this city, I'd recommend it. I think ultimately, in the future, as State Route 140 is widened, I think it's been mentioned here, these buffers and setbacks will probably all disappear in the process. So, let's say let's try to make the best of an undesirable situation at this point.
Julie, did you have any insight?
I do, Mayor. One, I'm going to go back to the first case that we had, when our attorney and our mayor asked what it is that we are supposed to do in terms of a deciding body. And the statements that were made into the record spoke very precisely to what we are sanctioned to do as a council, as it relates to zoning. And it is a difficult situation. I understand the things that have been outlined. I understood them a year ago, as did the council, when unfortunately, the law and the standards that were put forward indicated that what was being requested for this parcel was inconsistent with our land use policies, that it was inconsistent with what's required of this use permit. And staff did a very thorough job then, and they've done a thorough job this time. And I'm very concerned about negative legal precedent that is set when we decide to ignore the land use policies that are put in place by this community. I understand that there may have been misinformation, unfortunately, and I'm just going to go back to the very same issues that we dealt with. Different issue, different case, but fundamentally, we are sanctioned by law to make decisions on land use that have to do with development standards that are in place. And we don't have latitude to be arbitrary and capricious. We're supposed to look at those standards, evaluate them based on the law. And that's what staff did in their recommendation of denial. And it's why this council denied it a year ago. I do think it is further complicated by the fact that we had an applicant that unfortunately continued to ignore that land use decision. I don't mean any disrespect. It's just the reality when it comes to land use is that we are required to evaluate based on the land use policies. And the land use policies are very clear about what's required. This does not meet the standard of hardship, and therefore, those variances, while I understand that that would allow this use permit to be permitted, the issue is whether or not this particular parcel can handle the intensity of use that's outlined. And I'll just refer to all the pages that staff did where they made it very clear that legally, it doesn't meet our standards. It's inconsistent with the plans. It's inconsistent with the use permit requirements themselves. This land is AG1, yes. In fact, earlier this evening, we had our comprehensive land use planning chairman talk about future-looking land use plans. But that future land use plan for 140 has not been decided. We don't know what will take place on 140. We know that there's going to be a master plan, but this area hasn't been master planned yet. I'm very concerned about the legal precedent when we, one, allow a zoning that was legitimately and legally denied to effectively be ignored. Again, the precedent that that sets legally is perhaps not positive. I believe also that when we, as a council, have such numerous examples of where this does not meet our land use plan, it does not meet our policies, that we would be absolutely making a decision that's directly counter to those. I struggle with that because every day, just like we did in the last case, we're sanctioned to make decisions based on those laws and the things that are put in place. Nothing's changed in 12 months. Unfortunately, the same things that drove the legally binding decision to deny it the first time, this council voted on, still exists. And in fact, a number of variances have actually gotten worse. And I just think that we have to also be aware that not every use permit is necessarily applicable or possible on every parcel, because not every parcel can handle the intensity of use that's being proposed. I think that's the issue that we face. Are there other economically viable businesses that could be on this location and/or residences? Yes, there are. Those are enumerated under our zoning code. This would not preclude this from being utilized in other ways. The fact that it was used illegally historically does not mean that that illegal use can be grandfathered. And I'll ask the city attorney to please speak to that. If something was used historically by a different landowner illegally, is that illegal use?
I'll state the general proposition. The general proposition is, is for a right to be vested, it has to be legal in the first place to, or give rise to a vested entitlement. So I'm not answering the specific question. I'm giving you the general proposition, which I think is consistent.
Yes, sir. Again, I wish it weren't so. But the reality is that we do set in motion negative legal precedent when we completely ignore the policies that we have in place, including those policies that apply to this particular parcel. I think that it is incorrect to presume that a parcel next to this, in the future, were to be rezoned, that these variances would go away. Some of these variances are allowing for a zero lot line, zero, not 10 feet, not 20 feet, surely not the 60 feet that's required, but a zero lot line. I believe that even under our commercial code, we require more than a zero lot line. We're supposed to be buffering. We talked about Arnold Mill being a place that still can have mixed use, that can have residences, that can have agricultural land. But if we start to ignore the very policies that we helped to put in place, by ignoring those policies, just when it's convenient, again, I think sets a very negative legal precedent. And I'll just preserve the rest of my comments after I've heard from others.
Hold on. Anyone else have, Bert?
I agree with some of these comments that have been made. I wish we'd have had the professional representation a year ago when we looked at this. It would have, perhaps, made it a lot easier then. It seems like we're in between a rock and a hard place as a city. Cut off our nose despite our face. Do we deny this and have something that perhaps is going to fall in disrepair? I'm assuming Mr. Schaefer sunk everything he's had into this. If he goes out of business, he's not going to really have any money to fix this the way it needs to be. It's going to be a difficult sell, looking at some of Mr. Burry's drawings. I see this as if we can try to mitigate what's there and get the best out of it. It would probably be in the best interest of the City of Milton.
Yeah, I sort of see this as two different issues. I mean, obviously, the sort of, the condition of the property, the location of the buildings, the setbacks that exist or don't exist, we certainly didn't approve them. As the council stated, the applicant inherited these, and he inherited them because of lack of knowledge. And I certainly, while, you know, it's unfortunate, I can certainly see how that would happen. So in terms of recognizing current state of the property, I think that only makes sense. I have a hard time imagining what we could do to fix it. We can't require the property owner to do things that they don't have the resources to do. The second issue being the licensing of the permit for operating a landscape business. And while I can understand our concerns about intensive use and this, that, and the other, I mean, a landscaping business, for the most part, takes place off-site. I mean, it's not like he's in business to keep up that piece of property. He's in business to take care of other pieces of property. So it's really just a terminal. It's a place where equipment comes to sit overnight and leaves in the morning. So, I mean, while that certainly is a foreseen type of business on AG1, I think it would be better for us to fix, like I said, some of the other problems here and to look at providing the applicant with the license or the permit that he needs to operate his business. Because after all, I think that's what's going to enable him to fix the property the way that was described earlier. And I happen to be the only member sitting up here that wasn't present when the first process took place. So I was awfully glad that an explanation was provided, and it certainly made sense to me. So thank you for that. Okay. Alan, you have comments, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. And truthfully, I'm on the fence on this. I came in here having reviewed all this, having made a decision to deny this before, a year ago, and having known and looking at the application, that hardly anything has changed. And in fact, there's an additional variance that's being asked for than we had before. However, we didn't have this map that was provided tonight, or that, you know, was in our packet, but it was not provided a year ago. But I'm having a hard time, and I'll tell you why. On the one hand, it's completely inconsistent with our land use policies. It's completely inconsistent and out of compliance with use permit conditions. I'm cognizant of the fact that this body has denied other landscaping businesses in the past, actually, since the city has been inceptioned, unless I'm wrong. Any other landscaping business that's been before us that asked for concurrent variances have, we've denied. We did approve one, as the staff packet talks about, that did not have any variances asked for. But the rest of them that asked for variances, we denied them. And we denied it based on the fact that, you know, the use, the use permit has very specific considerations, and if the applicant cannot meet those, it is generally because the use is intense for that piece of property. And just in fairness to everyone who we've denied up until this point, and who asked for variances, and we've denied them on account of that, and then everyone who's going to become before us in the future, perhaps, to ask for landscaping businesses or variances, you know, I want to be fair to everyone. On the flip side of that, I'm looking at this, this, this that was provided by the applicant tonight, and I don't know that, staff, have you, have you really looked at this and commented on the remaining land that would be available? Have, you know, because, you know, as Councilmember Thurman pointed out, what uses are available on this property if we do not approve it for a landscaping business?
Well, essentially, it'd be limited to residential use. They'd have to turn the house from an office back into a house, a home, and it would have just a very large garage or storage building.
So if our, if our, if our land use plan is changed, or we master plan this area, and this is turned into commercial, say C1, and you've been doing this a lot longer than I have, given the buffers that would exist and that kind of thing, what kind of, what kind of area would be talking about that would be developable?
Well, if the adjoining properties became C1 as well, then a lot more of the property would be developable, essentially, most of the property that's north of the stream buffers, with the exception of the 60-foot front setback, excuse me, the front setback, which, if this one were C1 as well, it would be reduced. So there can be some additional property gain there as well. It just, it depends on what happens in that area. If it were to all still remain residential, and this one were to be rezoned commercial, then it would still have to have some buffers, and you'd see essentially the same thing. But if the rest of the area went commercial, then they'd have a lot more buildable area.
I have a question for staff and/or maybe the applicant's representation. But if this is approved, there are some stipulations in staff recommendations and some mitigation to the, the stream buffers, as well as, I think, some DOT, you know, doing the front entrance and approval from, I'm going to ask Carter, what's the process with that? Is there, they need to get approval from DOT or submit something? Does that submit to the city or?
Submitted directly to the state.
To the state.
So the state would have review and approval of any improvements within the right-of-way of 140.
Okay. And how is that to work? I know if the applicant agrees to do that, I guess, do we know if the DOT in concept would approve that, or is it pretty likely? I mean, I guess you're gaining, you're eliminating one drive, so it would probably be in the best interest of the DOT, correct?
Right. And I think DOT would tell you that they'll approve anything that's in compliance with their regulations.
Okay.
So provided they submit a drawing that's in compliance with GDOT regulations, there's no reason.
Yeah, but I want to make clear, is that, that's something stipulated in these conditions that the applicant submits and gets the DOT permit? And what's the timing on something like that? How long would that take?
Can take four to six months.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Burry?
In our first meeting with staff, Robin asked us to go meet with DOT before we came back and filed this application. And we've already met with DOT twice. That's how we knew the permission would be granted to remove the eastern driveway and improve the western driveway, as well as remove the wall that's on there right of way and the signage. We're in the process right now of preparing plans, not only for DOT for demolition and improvements, but we'll also be doing a land disturbance permit with the City of Milton for demolition, to take the driveway off interior of the property, as well as to add the dumpster and to redo the parking spaces. So we'll be doing two DOT permits, a demo and improvement. We'll be doing LDP with Milton for demolition and the improvements, including the plantings.
Okay. And how long would you expect before you could submit something if you were moving in that direction to the DOT?
We've already done the base drawings for DOT, although we've not submitted them pending the outcome of tonight. I think we could have all the drawings prepared by the end of the year, and I think they could probably be permitted based on where we know we are with DOT by March, in my opinion.
Okay. I just, you know, and again, I've already stated where my position on this was, but I, you know, want to add that if someone did make a motion to approve this, I'd like to stipulate that, you know, we put in some kind of timeframe based on the history of this case, and it's drug on, and both in the applicant's interest and our interest, to have a target date that the improvements are submitted and completed. But anyways, we've kind of been down the line. Does anyone have any other questions or certain motion or?
I just have one other question of staff. You said that if this was denied, their only alternative would be to either try to get it rezoned as commercial or go back to being residential. When was the last time a new home was constructed on Arnold Mill Road as a residential structure? Because, I mean, I guess what I'm asking is, you know, for people that are already living there as homes, that's one thing. But for someone to move there and transfer this back to a home, I'm not sure it really has an economic use as a, as a home, for, as a new home.
As a new home? Again, I couldn't really tell you the exact date of when the last permit would be for a home that faced Arnold Mill Road. I don't know that. The trend, you know?
It was probably before you were born.
Probably, yeah. That's what I'm kind of thinking, is that, you know, it really, you know, we say it has an economic use as a home, but yet at the same time, you know, it's very different when this would be transitioning back to a home. It's like building a new home, and I don't know that it really has an economic use as a home, I can tell you. I would not want to live right where it is.
I believe staff just had said, we had the building be turned back into a home like a rental house or something. So, yeah, I don't think.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mayor, if I may.
Julie.
And I appreciate the comment that Councilmember Thurman just made. I think it's important for the record, though, that we do state that that's not the only use. I mean, there are other use permits and other approaches that are applicable under agricultural land, so I think it's important that we don't presume that it's all one or the other, because there are a multitude of agricultural uses that are okay on 1.7 acres that perhaps don't require the same buffers, because it wouldn't be as intense a use permit. And again, I'll just speak to the, our professional staff, who we often refer to, that their point was that the proposed use is too intense for this particular property, based in part by the amount of equipment described in Section H and the apparent lack of screening. So the intensity is not just the buildings that existed previously, it's also the equipment that's being stored on 1.7 acres, in addition to all those buildings that were there previously. And again, many of my comments have to do with the fact that we do set precedent every time we make a decision. And I have a difficult time proactively supporting complete lack of support for our policies that we ourselves put in place. But I think it's important to say that there are other agricultural uses that could be used on this property, and that not every parcel, as demonstrated by this body, not every parcel is intended, nor was it ever intended for every parcel to be possible for a particular use. I would like to also speak to the question or the supposition that if in the future something were to change to C1, that these buffers would go away. I think in part, we do need to be mindful of what happens in the future. We don't know, because we haven't had the master plan. So if on the one hand, we say we don't have a master plan yet, but we're going to assume that this is going to become all linear, commercial development, I think, again, we're, it's counterintuitive to what we as a body have said as recently as last week, when we took the draft of the comprehensive land use plan. I don't know, for those that are considering potentially approving this, if you would consider future buffers, if the adjacent properties were to change and other property would become available. We heard that other property with this would allow buffers. And so again, I would just request that you think a little more broadly about those eventual buffers, and for us to ignore that need now, I think, is undermining the opportunity for Arnold Mill to develop appropriately, and as we've stated, it should, with regards to a comprehensive land use plan.
I would like to get clarification on that comment from Staff. What could go there, other than a residence that would not require any variances from the, based on where the buildings and all currently are, because they're actually in the setbacks?
I'd have to check for the use permits for, for instance, a veterinary clinic or a kennel.
But they'd still require?
Would they not have the same? That's my question.
They'd still have to have a?
They'd still have to require the same variances, or most of the same variances.
But there are some uses that don't require a use permit. I mean, you could have a horticulturally-based business that's less intense with less equipment that would be there that wouldn't require a use permit. I mean, some of those things are allowable by the very nature that it's AG1, and so the reality is that our zoning code allows for that. There are those examples. You know, we've talked about modifying our uses to allow for produce-related sorts of businesses. Those don't require a special use permit. I mean, you can grow things, you can sell things. There are businesses that are very viable that do that. Grimes Produce on Crab Apple and Woodstock Road, it's a viable business, has been for years. You've got other businesses that have come into Milton that do that as well. Is it the existing business that's in violation of our code? No. Are there other viable uses economically? Yes. Part of the reason I think it's imperative that we have part of that discussion is that this is not the only parcel. And if we simply say that, one, I didn't know, and I'm sorry, and I was misinformed, and again, no disrespect to this particular applicant, I think we have to tread very carefully that we don't set in motion the opportunity for somebody to simply go by a parcel that they know doesn't meet the standard, that was illegal in the first place, under other jurisdictions, or just because it was illegal, and that suddenly we allow that to legislatively become a basis for allowing a use that's otherwise not allowable under our code.
And I think, and certainly appreciate everybody's input, I think everybody's had a chance to speak. I'm going to open up to motions. In fact, Councilmember Bailiff, if you'd like to make a motion, or if anyone else would, I'll open up the floor. Karen?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve. Let me see that number here.
U10-2, B.C. 10-04, with the conditions as presented by the staff.
Could I ask Councilmember Thurman if you would consider putting in a reasonable date?
And what would you, what do you feel like would be a reasonable date with that?
Land, you?
In anticipation of that question, we've put together some potential amendments that might help you there, amending Condition 3H for vital landscape plan, including the buffer mitigation plan for the areas of the stream buffer that are disturbed, to add within 30 days of approval and complete installation by February 28, 2011. This is a pretty quick turnaround. However, Mr. Berry did indicate that some of those plans are currently out of way. And then also to amend Condition Number Four, to add Section D, that the applicant must have an approved driveway access permit from GDOT within six months of approval, or at the discretion of the Public Works Director, thereby allowing for any delays that are not necessarily caused by the applicant, but via getting, just part and parcel, getting that state permit.
I would just ask, is the applicant, does that sound reasonable?
If we could do December 31 on the landscape submission to the city, I think that would be helpful with the holidays coming up. I think the second one's plenty of time. I'd almost trade you a shorter time on the first one.
So that's only 45 days rather than the 30 days?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that okay?
We have Thanksgiving and Christmas coming up, and those few jurisdictions might not be.
That's up to Councilmember Thurman to term motion.
That's fine with me. Do I need to restate it all, or is it?
I would say, just for clarity.
And Councilmember Thurman, when you do that, I just, just for purposes of the record, I would call out the approval of the variances.
Okay. I'd like a motion to approve U10-02, B.C. 10-04, conditioned upon the staff's conditions to request a use permit for a landscaping business, Section 64-1820, and a four-part concurrent variance in existing buildings consisting of an 800-square-foot office and 6,600-square-foot warehouse, for a total of 7,400 square feet, at an overall density of 4,327 square feet per acre; one, to reduce a portion of the 50-foot buffer and 10-foot improvement setback to zero feet, beginning at a point on the west property line at the northwestern property corner, for a total distance of 126 feet, to a point on the west property line located 126 feet south of the northwestern property corner, Section 64-1141.3.A. Two, to reduce a portion of the 50-foot buffer and a 10-foot improvement setback to a 30-foot undisturbed buffer with a 10-foot improvement setback, beginning at a point located 40 feet south of the northeastern property corner, for a total distance of 98 feet, to a point on the east property line located 138 feet south of the northeastern property corner, Section 64-1141.3.A. Three, to reduce the 50-foot building setback to a 44.09-foot setback for the warehouse along the east property line, Section 64-1820B3. And four, to reduce the 50-foot building setback to a 47.58-foot setback for the warehouse and a 28.25-foot setback for the steps to the office deck along the west property line, Section 74-1820B3, with the staff recommended conditions. Adding on 3H, that they provide a landscape plan, including the buffer mitigation plan for the areas of the stream buffer that are disturbed, within 45 days of approval, with installation to be completed by February 2011. And 4D was, I can't read my writing here.
B. It's 4B.
Adding B.
What was 4?
It's D.
D?
Yes, ma'am.
4D was, what was?
The applicant must have an approved driveway access permit from GDOT within six months of approval, or at the discretion of the Public Works Director.
Couldn't have said it better.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion by Councilmember Thurman, and second by Councilmember Lasky. Are there any discussion?
I have two questions, Mayor, now that there's a motion on the table.
There's a motion on the table.
If I have a question.
Okay.
Because there is infringement into the Blue Line Tributaries, I didn't hear any discussion about any potential requirements with regards to the EPA and the EPD, and given some things that are occurring in other Blue Line Tributaries, I think before there is a vote, if Staff could speak to that.
The encroachment is, again, as noted from the professionally drawn site plans, there is an encroachment in the 25-foot minimum state water buffer. It is an existing encroachment. At this point, EPD has taken no action. We haven't necessarily contacted EPD for additional action.
And I guess that's my question. Is that if this is going to proceed, and if we're trying to take this parcel and mitigate it for those things that we just said were the ills of the property, I would just ask the maker of the motion to at least consider that, especially given that we have another example where there's been some public concern over encroachment into state waters and how to mitigate that. So if we've not reached out to the EPA or the EPD, it wouldn't mitigate the motion, but it would require that we were consistent with bringing this back into compliance supposedly, the very things that I've heard or some of the concerns of my counterparts. So that would be one question. The other had to do with trailways and walkways, knowing that Arnold Mill may or may not have some modification over time, and knowing that our standard is that we are to have alternative trails and walkways. If I heard the applicant and their experts specifically, the back portion of this is available, but I didn't hear any conditions or any discussion about how we would integrate alternative walkways, and knowing that if we've got plans for Arnold Mill, I would just recommend that, again, the maker of the motion at least consider that, so that we don't lose that opportunity in the future, should some people here decide to proceed.
Well, that's certainly up to the make of the motion, and all due respect, I had, you know, offered up, Councilmember Bailiff, that you could have made a motion too, so I don't know if this would make.
My request, is, Mayor, with all due respect, is the fact that there's now a motion on the table, and that that motion didn't include those two?
Yeah, and the make of the motion can certainly add that if.
Thank you so much.
I will, I would leave that just up to Staff's discretion. I mean, I really feel like we've got to go with their professional recommendation as far as conditions, and, you know, it's up to them whether or not they feel like they need to get the EPD involved in something that has already been done and was done a long time ago. So I will leave that up to Staff to make that decision.
And I appreciate that. My request back to our city manager, then, would be that we need to decide as a city, if we become aware of an infringement on a state water, I don't know that we have, I don't know that we have the ability to ignore that infringement and not engage in it, especially given our situation on Birmingham Highway and the fact that there was one of the largest fines that was imposed. I think that we do have some sense of responsibility. So again, if this particular case brings that forward as a need, I would just suggest that that be a consideration. I'd be a little surprised that we wouldn't proactively reach out to the EPA, knowing that we became aware of an infringement of state waterways. And as it relates to the standard of the walkway, my request or my question is just that if we're imposing that on other cases, in terms of an alternative trail system, et cetera, even though we may not know where that connectivity is today, would that be inconsistent with how we've approached things? And at this point, it really is having to do with the consistency of other issues beyond just this particular parcel. So I'm not sure why we would treat this differently, given we've made that a requirement of every other rezoning and or use permit. So I, separate from the maker of the motion, and I do appreciate that input, since it was put back to Staff, I'd ask that question of Staff.
And I also say, you know, if moving forward, if the city manager and legal and community development director would discuss that and, you know, get back with us on that moving forward, that makes sense.
Could I have, this is a matter of order, I'm sorry, point of information. I guess I was hoping for this before there was a question.
I don't think we need to get together and.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to listen, and we're trying to leave you to talk to each other all at the same time. We can, I just got some information from Lynn with respect to the EPA and the EPD issue. I can tell you, not on this particular piece of property, but on the most recent one, apparently, that we acquired with them, they weren't overly receptive to doing a whole lot with the information. We could try and see if they might be interested in taking a look at this one. Just let us give, give us the opportunity, at least, in a forum where we're not trying to answer questions on the fly and give you stuff, let us chat about it, and we'll bring something back to you. Your comments on the walkways and trailways, I prefer to partners being the expert there, but we will look at that as well.
But if we look at it after the fact, does it then not become a condition?
Well, we'll look at it actually as a part of the LDP. If it's required as part of the child's plan, then that's when we'll give it full discussion.
Okay, so can you just mention, then, whether or not that would seem to be consistent with what we've done in other situations? I'm just trying to make sure that we're being thorough, and given the opportunity, I think it's a missed opportunity if we're not thorough about the stuff that we say is important.
Right, I think with any of those, if it's a requirement of the ordinance, it doesn't necessarily have to be a condition of something. And so if the master, trail master plan shows trail or sidewalk on this particular side of the road, they would have to install that as part of their LDP. It could be that the trail is shown on the opposite side of the road, and off the top of my head, we could certainly look at that and we'll look at that during the review process for the.
But in particular, especially if this motion goes forward, this parcel has property at the back that would seem to be very consistent with the ability to offer some of that connectivity. So thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Okay. Any other questions? If there are none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's six to one. Sorry, five to two. Five in favor, two against. Okay. Will the city clerk please sound the next zoning issue?
I'm getting ready to write, and I really got to read a public hearing for possible rescission and reconsideration of previous council denial of zoning, case RZ 10-01 pursuant to order of remand, Agenda Item Number 101269, referred to the October 18, Council meeting and public comments heard. I'm going to let, so we handle this one procedurally correct, I'm going to let Mr. Traver take this one.
Chairman of the council, what I recommend, given that this is two parts, it's a decision and a reconsideration, I believe that what needs to occur is that our community development director can make a presentation with respect to the matter before you. Then I would ask that we have the public hearing, hold the public hearing, and then you can make a motion with respect to the rescission, because the rescission is in and of itself a zoning action. And so go ahead and make the rescission, and then after the rescission is completed, then you can take your next action with respect to reconsideration. So that's how we ought to handle this.
Okay, so what you're saying is we need to take action on approving the rescission?
First.
First.
Yes, sir.
So I need a motion and a second to?
After, I mean, they made it on clear, after Ms. Tully makes her presentation to you.
Okay.
Open it up for a public hearing, and then the next action we need to take is the motion to rescind.
Okay. All right.
I promise to be short. I don't have a whole lot of new information on this particular item, so the item remains a request to rezonate C1 community business from C1 and AG1. Again, I don't have a lot of new information. They have provided, the applicant has provided the additional information with regard to traffic and turning movements, and we've done independent analysis on those turning movements. Those are included in your case as well. I believe that they are photocopied, and there are red hash marks, so that you can follow those turning movements. I'll actually ask Mr. Lucas to go through those with you, because he understands those a lot better than I do.
Yes.
Good for you.
While he's setting up, we have, again, done all our reviews with the other city departments, including the fire marshal and the transportation reviews. Again, we have not found any additional issues, other than what has been noted. Our review, the fact that the planning commission did recommend denial, six to zero on February The planning commission discussion at that time includes. The planning commission discussion at that time included, number one, the number of times a week of that fuel would be delivered, the number of employees per shift, the potential congestion conflicts that are on-site, the need economically for a fifth pump, and then whether or not it was possible to design the site without the concurrent variance, which they have done, and that some of the commissioners did express that the parcel may be rezoned commercial, the proposed use, they believed at the time was too intensive for the size and shape of the property. Again, this, this parcel has been before you on March the 15th as well, and was deferred to May, and then was continued to be discussed and deferred. Planning Commission's most recent recommendation at the April 27th meeting was for denial, four to two, with discussion of the service station exclusion in Condition 2A for the CBS development to the north and its effect on any recommendations for the subject site. Number two, a change from ride-in, ride-out only access on Bethany Bend to a full-access driveway on the current site plan. Number three, how the site will accommodate the tanker-truck deliveries. Number four, the number of time of gas deliveries, their size, type, dispensing holes, and venting of the underground gas storage tanks. Number five, hours of operation, delivery times. Number six, traffic counts and signal timing for the intersection. And we are before you again tonight to hear your action on rescission of this item and then reconsideration.
Mr. Mayor, just a further point of clarification with respect to process, as you know, this matter was and is the subject of present litigation in the Fulton County Superior Court. We are here pursuant to a September 1st, 2010, Order of Remand by the court, and that is the procedural posture that we are in. Depending upon the matter the council takes this evening, this matter either could be resolved, or it may simply go back to the court if there is no satisfactory resolution. Again, I think the next action the council needs to take is to open the public hearing. The public hearing starts, I think the gallery, particularly those here to speak, need to understand that everyone that, that has a position or issue on this issue, one way or the other, needs to speak during this public hearing that we're about to call. If they're in favor of D Squared's position, those folks need to speak, and obviously if there's opposition to D Squared's position or original rezoning, those folks need to speak as opponents. At that point, after that is closed, then I think it would be appropriate for a motion if there is an interest by the council to rescind the previous denial. That will clear the decks, if you will, and then the matter will be before the council for whatever action the council may take.
Okay, so to clarify, we are moving forward with the public hearing...
Yes, sir.
... as presented.
Mr. Mayor, before we do, before we do that, could Dolly Carter start to tee up? Could we just finish our staff presentation by going through the turning movements real quickly?
Sure.
Since that would have incorporated in our staff report.
Sure, and if there's any question before I open up the public hearing, any questions from staff, I mean, from council to staff, please, good, please.
Thank you, Mayor, council. What we were asked to do originally was to take a look at the turning movement that was originally submitted in the first application. We've gone through and run that scenario to verify that original truck routing, as well as look at some routings of other vehicles on and through this site. So the first, first slide you see, and should be the first in the handout, is a full-size gas truck. And what you see here, the hatched area would be the inside wheels to outside wheels, or the area that the truck would take up as it moved through the site. This first slide is a recreation, basically, of the original turning movement that was submitted in that first application. One of the things that happens with this particular one that we had to do to recreate it is, it's a very slow movement of the truck through the site. And so coming off of Highway 9, this particular movement is from the decel lane versus the through lane that was shown on the original application. That truck movement, as it moves, has a few turns from a stop movement, which is kind of the kinks that you see that were in question at the original meeting. And so it's a valid turn, as far as the program is concerned, and probably in real life. But what we wanted to do was, if, completely independent of everything else, we ran a separate routing that is a more continuous movement of the fuel truck as it enters the site. And so that would be the second slide that you have. You can see that as it enters the site on the right-hand side of that entrance, there is a little bit of run-up on the curb. That can probably be cured with some minor modifications to that entrance configuration. The green block that you see is the actual location of the tanker without the cab, in a position that we would think it would stop to try and fuel, in the location where those fuel trucks are shown, or fuel tanks are shown. So you would have the green truck, as well as the cab, in a separate position that would probably turn off to the right as it made that maneuver, and then traverse itself through the site. So that was the full-size gas truck. And there was an option presented by the applicant of a smaller gas truck, providing particular deliveries to the site. And so we went ahead and routed the smaller gas truck through, through the property, and that's what you see here. The difference, you're looking at forty-five-and-a-half-foot vehicle with the full-size truck to a thirty-three, a little bit larger than a thirty-three-foot vehicle moving through the site. The next slide, next slide would demonstrate the routing of a delivery truck. So this would be a standard box thirty-foot delivery truck, coming in off of Highway 9, working its way through the site and exiting out on Bethany Bend. Then we routed a vehicle, a standard nineteen-foot-long vehicle through the site. So here it is, it would come in off of Highway 9, route itself around the pumps, and then back out Highway 9. And we did the same thing with a vehicle coming in and out on Bethany Bend. This particular vehicle would come in off of Bethany Bend, decel lane, go all the way to the furthest pump, and then come back out through the site and back out, exiting on Bethany Bend. Same thing could happen, it could go out on Highway 9, similar to the vehicle we saw in previous slide. And we also looked at a vehicle with a trailer. About the only maneuver that this can make is coming in off of Highway 9, the first set of gas pumps, and then exit out on Bethany Bend, making a right or left on Bethany Bend. And we also looked at the parking spaces at the very end to see the routing of the parking spaces at the very end of the site in the corner. And so here you would have a vehicle that would have to back up, pass, pass the pumps, and then come around the pumps to be able to exit out from those two or three parking spaces on the very end. Similar maneuver to a vehicle that would be parked at that very last pump in a fueling operation.
Is there any questions for Carter on this stuff?
Can you put the first couple back up again?
So that would be the large gas truck in two different scenarios.
It's up on the curb.
That is up on the curb as you come in.
Mayor, can I ask a question? Thank you, Mayor. So Carter, would I be correct in saying that if we limited the size of the gas delivery and other delivery vehicles to no more than thirty-three feet with no trailers, then that would fit all of the scenarios that you have provided here in the turnkey, or whatever this is called, turnkey?
The PowerPoint?
Yes. What, what program did we use for this?
Oh, auto turn.
Auto turn, yeah.
Well, the, if you limited, the small truck, the small delivery truck is a cab and a trailer-type configuration that we were given. So if your, if your question is, would we...
So non-articulated is what you're...
Non-articulated.
So you're saying that, so you're saying that this is the next-to-last one, or the last one? Which one, which one is the normal delivery truck, not for gas, because I've got that, we got to be thirty-three or less?
Okay.
But what I'm looking at is just a delivery truck?
The delivery truck is just a thirty-foot box truck.
Okay, so that's good. The thing you talked about, the cab, or the, the trailer, delivery truck with trailer, and it appears to be all over the place.
It's a, actually, a more...
It's a car.
Car pickup with a trailer-type configuration.
Oh, okay.
A customer.
Oh, customer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm rid of this, sorry. So if you take what I said, and just take the trailers out of it, we limited the size of gas delivery and other delivery vehicles to thirty-three feet or less, that would, other than the, the car with the trailer on it, it would meet all of the, the turn specifications in this PowerPoint?
It, it would. I, you know, if the truck is careful, the large fuel truck could make it through this site, too.
But they'd have to back up and do that kind of...
They wouldn't have to back up.
They should have to go very, very slowly.
They would have to go very slowly to make it through, and they would be taking the whole site. There's no doubt about that.
Let me ask you a question, Carter. We're showing it hitting the curbs. Who's responsible for maintaining those curbs if, you know, if the delivery gas truck damages those curbs?
Where this is hitting, it would be within the right-of-way, technically, we would be, state DOT would be.
Yeah, it's gonna be a fixed record.
And the state DOT would be responsible for permitting any configuration for the entrance coming in off of Highway 9.
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
The state DOT would be responsible for permitting any configuration of the entrance coming in off of Highway 9.
So they'll probably look at this very hard if they're responsible for the right-of-way?
I would assume they would. But again, they'll, they'll be looking for it in conformance with their regulations. Typically, I don't know that they would go to the steps of requesting an auto turn-type supplemental for their permission.
All right, is there any questions on this for Carter? Any more presentation from staff, or I'm gonna open up the public hearing now?
Mayor, we'll start with those speaking in support of Mr. Hendricks.
This is just on the rescission, whether or not to rehear it, correct?
That's correct.
And so the comments need to be pertinent to that, correct?
Excuse me?
So the comments need to be pertinent to that, or not?
Well, I think, I think that the rescission and the reconsideration are all linked for purposes of this matter, so I mean, that's, that's why I was asking the mayor, that you need to speak to the entirety of the issue, so...
Big to the entirety of it?
Yes, ma'am.
But they want to repeat everything we're saying? We can process it and...
Basically, they're, they're speaking as, yeah, we were rehearing this rules of scratch.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Pete Hendricks' practice law, 685 Lake Forest Drive. As we have gone through this, through all iterations and imaginations, in the final analysis, the suggestion was, well, gosh, you know, maybe in there another alternative, in there another track out there that you may be able to go do. So with that, we armed ourselves up, the applicant, Abdul Labir, with A and R Engineering, Brad Ripple with ADC, and Royce Brooks with Lance Oil Company, and tried to do a, a micro-global review and analysis of anything and everything in the area. And what we're buttoning up against is the conflict, the inability to be able to come up with a track such as the track that's in front of you, that's got full-access signalization, has got the accommodation of, as far as Highway 9 is concerned, you've got the going-home traffic, which by every professional comment is the significant flow of traffic. With Bethany Bend, you have an even split between going to work and all the way home. So you have a very unusual situation in the benefit of the traffic flow that comes to the piece of property. In addition to that, it is, constitutes a corner lock, which is critical in the industry, as opposed to a mid-block location, which has issues of accessibility and visibility. So with all of that, our analysis in the relative area came up short, let alone the extreme likelihood that where we define another track, you'd have to go through rezoning, and much, probably the same issues that would be presented to you all. So with, with that said, I think we need to go to the most recent staff review that announces and comment. Pages 11 through 15, they speak to the standards of review and full and complete compliance where appropriate, and bearing the negative of the response such as environmental comment. It's, it's all in positive, and most particularly on page three, compliance review plan policies. Encourage development in the sense of the overall setting of the community, will contribute to our community's character in the sense of place. We will encourage development of a balanced network of personal activity centers to meet the service needs of our citizens while avoiding unattractive and inefficient strip development. This proposed facility, I'm reading outside the box, is going to be all brook, fenestration, articulation. You've got a, a, a trash component that looks like you're opening barn doors in order to be able to get to it. So it's a very unusual, high-end development that would be proposed. Going back to the plans, we will encourage new development in located suitable locations close to transportation, infrastructure, resources, in order to protect environmentally sensitive areas, invaluable historic archaeology, art, you got me, or cultural resources from the environment. Support development projects that provide increased density close to Windward Parkway, Georgia 400 and Sideline 9, consistent with the land use and infrastructure development policies of the city of Milton and cities and stakeholder expectations. Now, what, as we have gone through all of this, has been the checklist of modification, change, amendment to the original application that was filed, and that you all had opportunity to review. We started out with six pumps, then we were down to four, to five pumps, and now the application that you have in front of you is, is four pumps. The concurrent variance was withdrawn. The convenience rail building has been reduced from 2,400 square feet to 2,100 square feet. The emission, emissions component has been deleted. We have submitted a beefed-up landscapes plan to give even more supplemental plantings along Bethany Bend and Highway 9, and that's in form, that's the plan in front of you, so if you see fit to approve, it becomes part of the conditions. There's compliance with landscape strips and sidewalks and bike paths, and compliance with the local overlay district for Highway 9. Interparcial access to the prop to the south has been shown, and put paving and curb cutting on, on the ground. We have got raised pavement for interparcial sidewalk from Bethany Bend to frustrate, cut through traffic. The light study previously submitted acknowledges the fact that we go beyond the restrictions of the night sky ordinance, we're more restrictive than the night sky ordinance calls for. What you all just had opportunity to review to go over is to the truck turning scheme and fire truck accessibility. I'm gonna ask Brad Ripple to step up, as he can confirm to you, modification and amendment that can be made to that curb off of Bethany Bend, in order to avoid any mild slippage of, of truck tires going through the curb. In addition to that, we've agreed to a fire heart that being placed in immediate proximity of Bethany Bend across from this, and fire combination, as the fire marshal has suggested, he would like to have off of Highway 9. We have also agreed that at the corner, at the intersection, Bethany Bend and Highway 9, we're gonna try and give a community look and feel to that location. And lastly, we're talking about a generation of approximately $500,000 in sales and employee taxes, and the creation of six to eight new jobs. With that, Brad, I would ask if you would please, or if you'd step up in your... With that, Brad, I would ask if you would please, sir, if you'd step up and your professional confirmation on what I just...
Brad Ripple with AEC, fifty-one Spring Circle. We can adjust the curbs to accommodate the truck routing. What we need to understand is that this is a computer simulation and real-world application may, may be applied. I would submit that a real-world situation is probably going to be, render a better situation. You can run these truck routes different ways, whether you do the curb, the cab, one way or the other. A real-world driver is probably going to be more, have the ability to adjust and make it better routing, as opposed to us working computer simulation.
And I guess at this point, I can reserve time for rebuttal out of the ten minutes that otherwise were being allocated for the presentation.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, I've got four more cards listed in support of this. I'll just read the names. I believe they may or may not all represent the applicant. Do you want to, everybody on this, these names?
Probably our professionals don't represent the applicant. That is the applicant, that is professional. I'm not certain who.
Okay.
And that is traffic engineering.
Okay, so we have one other public comment. Public comment would be Jay Leonard.
He is associated with the professional on the fill-in station analysis and location, so they wanted to say he's part of the professional's group.
Okay, so then I don't have any other cards in support.
Okay. So, opening up to those who oppose this application.
Mayor, we've got two tonight. The first one is Mr. Phil Joseph.
Well, good evening. I'm Phil Joseph. I live at thirteen eight hundred Oakmead Trace in Milton. I'm not sure there's a lot to add tonight. We've been over this lot. There's a bad corner. We've got a new high school going in. It's of intensive use. It's unwelcome in the community. There's no transition between the properties, you know, to residential. The driveways don't line up. There's alternative uses we've suggested, and, you know, I'm afraid that if you approve this, there'll be a gas station at the CVS corner next, which will be two on that corner. The future growth and the widening of Route Nine is going to whack off the landscaping that gets put in. All that aside, because I think we've heard all these arguments before, I was talking to the city attorney in the meeting that I had with you, Mr. Mayor. I asked him, don't other municipalities have ordinances that ensure some separation of gas stations from residences? And he said, yes, they do. I said, why is that? He said, well, presumably it's for safety. And I don't know if that's, you know, if the safety is a reason or not. Probably isn't some, maybe not in some others, but, and I'm not holding him responsible for knowing the answer to that question either, but I did just want to say that other ordinances or other communities do have those ordinances. They certainly hold up in court. So it seems to me that if you go back to the judge and you say, we denied this because it's too close to a residence, I just can't see the judge saying, that doesn't make any sense. You can't do that. Now, he may say, do you have an ordinance that specifies how far away a gas station is from residence? And we'd say, no, we don't. We're working on one. I was here when we discussed it. You discussed it. I know it's in process. It's a new town, and you're working on it. I would think that would be acceptable to the court, I would think. It seems reasonable to me. Alternatively, it seems like you're going to have a homeowner suffer for not having that if he says, no, you can't. You have to grant this because you don't have an ordinance. So I'm simply saying that as the homeowner that's across the street from this one and directly, you know, abutting the CVS property, and I don't see how you can say yes to this one and no to Eric Lou for the CVS property right behind us, I'm simply asking you to say no to the gas station because it's too close to residences. I think that's a, that just seems to me on the face of it to be a rational position. And we, as the community, are asking you, the representatives, to do that. As you know, there are hundreds of people who support this. You've seen them here before. They aren't here all here tonight, but you know that there are. And so that's our position, is deny this and do it in a way that the court would accept. Thank you.
Mayor, the second comment tonight is Diane Palmer.
Hello, I'm Diane Palmer, and I live at thirty-three hundred Bethany Bend. And I just, first of all, just wanted to say thank you, Mayor, and council, for listening to me and for all the hard work I know all of you have done on this issue, and it's deeply, deeply appreciated by me and others. As I listen tonight, the first thing that comes to mind is, I walk by this site every day. I walk with my neighbors. I walk my golden retrievers. And I personally am very concerned about the real-world truck, the real-world situation and the real-world driver. As I said, I walk there. And also, I do just want to mention all of the hard work, and you all know, you have books of all of the detailed issues that the neighbors are concerned about and the community is concerned about and I'm concerned about. And obviously, those of us who are diehards and are here tonight like you are at the end of a long meeting. I remain very concerned, and many of the Bethany community residents remain very concerned about the gas station. I also very much appreciate the applicant. I appreciate that he is interested in investing in Milton. I am concerned about a gas station. I'm concerned, and let me just say, I'm concerned that we sometimes get into semantics. One of the issues we've talked about in the past is that Fulton County had conditioned the lots around this lot not to have a service station. Service stations are kind of antiquated now, and it's my understanding that currently the condition that they put on it is for a convenience station or a gas station. I think the intent was to protect residents from uses that are highly intense. And again, I was here at the work session, I don't know, a week, two weeks ago, when you all discussed buffers between residents and gas stations, and I was so encouraged to see such agreement amongst you, that it is very important to the residents to protect us from being directly across or next to gas stations. And in this particular case, I believe it's twenty-five feet between the proposed gas station property line or convenience floor property line and Mr. Joseph's property right across the street. I just remain concerned about intensity of use in this particular place. I remain concerned about safety, hazardous materials, high school students that'll be walking there. I'm concerned about traffic, this being the second most dangerous intersection in Milton. And I just know, I know that you all will do what is best for Milton. I want to express appreciation to you. This kind of issue is why we have a city and why you all were elected, and I appreciate your hard work and you listening and taking the community into your consideration.
Mayor, that's all the public comment I have. Both sides still have time.
Okay. Go back to the applicant.
Whatever the width of a right-of-way is on Bethany Bend, I don't know exactly. Twenty-five feet seems a little shy, but we do know that as far as from the edge of the applicant's property line to the Joseph's home, three hundred and seventy-five feet, and you have a topography grade change that comes into play with that also. Because it's critical, I'd like to go back again, specificity, to your staff review and comment on standards of review, whether or not the proposal will be used that is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby property, if they found it suitable. Whether or not the proposed proposal will adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property, will not adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property if it is developed with the required development standards of the Highway Nine overlay district, which they have seen fit in their review and analysis to confirm it does require. Then, very critically, whether the property to be affected by the proposal has a reasonable economic use as currently zoned, and it is found not to. Whether the proposal will result in a use which will or could cause excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools, no significant impact. Whether the proposal is conformity with policies and intent of the land use plan. The subject site is a prominent corner of the city of Milton designated in the plan that's neighborhood living, working. The revised site plan provides a more pedestrian-friendly area based on the location of the sidewalks and beauty strips along both funnages between the curb and the sidewalk, as well as the bike lane on Highway Nine. And then we get into the planned policies, which I read from a little bit earlier. Whether there are other existing or changed conditions affecting the use and development of the property which gives supporting grounds for the approval or disapproval of the application. The revised site plan meets the development standards of the Highway Nine overlay district and development requirements for a site and that the intersection is transitioned. Whether zoning proposal will be used that can be considered environmentally adverse to natural resources, environment, citizens of Milton, found not to be. And then, very importantly, in wrapping up with the final comment of staff, the proposed gas station and associated gas pumps are consistent with planned policies, although the site is small and located within an acute triangle in two road funnages of the revised site plan submitted April twentieth, two thousand and ten, meets the development standards required by the city of Milton's zoning ordinance, which ameliorates potential negative impacts on nearby residential uses. So it's a combination of all those reasons and the ratcheting down and revision and rework of the application in front of you, we think it's appropriate for approval. Thank you.
Okay. So at this point, I will close the public hearing, and let's clarify one more time. Do we need to have a motion on rescission?
We do.
Okay.
Motion to rescind the council's prior denial of this zoning action.
Okay, let me ask Mr. Joseph.
Yeah, I thought I would have a chance to respond. I just want to say that...
There is a couple minutes.
Sure.
When Pete says there's three hundred and seventy-five feet between their property and our house, what he's basically saying is that my land becomes our transition space, which I don't think is the proper, is the intention of the idea of a transition. So I just want to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close the public hearing now, and I'll open up the floor for a motion to approve the, this rescission. So we need to make a motion to rescind the decision previously...
The previous decision.
Given by the city of Milton?
Yes.
Correct. So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion for rescission by a council member. Longoria, second by council member. Hewitt, any discussion? Hearing, not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous.
Now, this zoning matter is back on the table. So ready for...
Okay. So at this point, we've had a presentation, we've had public comment, and a...
If I may, I did neglect to include one small change in the conditions in my staff presentation. If you'll look at condition, recommended conditions for A, for B, we need to replace that condition. It currently reads northbound, right turn lane on Highway Nine at Bethany Bend, and it should read eastbound, right turn lane on Bethany Bend at New Access Drive.
Okay, repeat that again.
Condition four A, four B should be replaced. It should be reflected on a sheet there at your table. To remove northbound, right turn lane on Highway Nine at Bethany Bend, and to replace that with eastbound, right turn lane on Bethany Bend at New Access Drive. And that's simply reflective of the newest site plan.
So you're combining B and C. You're removing B, that's the plan in it, with C.
This new one's... It's removing one B and replacing it with a new one.
Yeah. Effectively, the language is a limit. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't know, because one of them's for Highway Nine, Bethany Bend, register.
City Attorney, did I effectively just say...
Are we going to do different versions?
It's a new B. A new B.
Yeah, just a new B.
There you go.
New B.
Sorry.
Okay. And at this point, then, if there's any, I'm assuming, Mr. City Attorney, we can ask questions of not only staff, but...
Absolutely.
The applicant, you know, any questions for the applicant? I have a question for staff, and I know it was expressed a minute ago, you know, there's a difference, there's a difference between the proximity of this convenience store and Mr. Joseph's property, and then there's also the difference, the distance between the convenience store and the actual, his residence. Do we know, is that the, would that be the closest residence? I've driven around, is that the actual closest residence around there?
I believe that it is, yes, sir.
Okay. And I'm just going to open it up for questions, and Karen?
I've got one question for staff. On this one-page summary, I guess that was presented by D-Square Development dated October sixth, two thousand and ten, it said the city arborist wants to discuss some tree selection placement with the project landscape architect. I did not see, I saw one of the conditions of zoning, you know, city arborist would need to approve just one part of it, but I didn't see if that was part of, that was in all of the conditions, and I may have just been missing it. And also, they submitted pictures of a benches and trash receptacles, but I didn't see where that was actually in the conditions, and I wanted to make, see whether or not that needed to be added to a, as a condition of zoning.
The new trash receptacles and benches are, were offered by the applicant, and that would be a condition if you so choose to add.
So it would be a new condition?
Yes, ma'am.
And how about the, having the city arborist approve the plan? Because I know it says under three C for the south property line is approved by the city arborist, but that's just the one property line.
The city arborist would approve the entirety of the plan during the LDP process, so he's going to get an opportunity to approve it now or later. It will be before installation of the landscape.
Okay.
So really, should we provide additional landscaping within the required landscape strip as approved by the city arborist?
Yes, provide additional landscaping.
I guess it was confusing me, because it just said south property line. I wanted to make sure the city arborist was approving all of the landscaping.
Yes, ma'am. He would be.
Okay.
What site is that?
Page thirty-one of thirty-two D.C.
What, what, what C?
D.C. I mean, excuse me, three C.
Three C.
C.C., yes. I mean, does that make sense, provide additional landscaping within the required landscape strip as approved by the city arborist? Is it just the landscape strip that we're talking about?
Maybe you should say landscape strips.
Okay.
More questions?
I have some questions. Thank you, Mayor. And I've got some notes in myself, so I apologize if I'm just slow. Under the recommended conditions one A, am I missing it, or is there a reason why service stations were not included? And I ask that because of all of the debate going on with... And I ask that because of all of the debate going on with service stations, and there could be, you know, the intensity of use and that kind of thing, since those would traditionally come with bays and that kind of thing. Am I missing it, or is there a reason why we didn't have it there? For some reason?
No, sir, we specifically did not include that one.
Is there a reason why we didn't?
I think originally, with the emission station there, I mean, it couldn't be considered a service station, but it was close, and we emitted it. We could add that in, I mean, that could be added in.
And then, the DRB comments talk about, and staff in general, talks about the screening of the dumpster. Yet, the recommended conditions, unless I'm missing it, don't talk about screening of the dumpster. Is that covered under general ordinances, and therefore, it doesn't have to be specified, or?
Yes, sir, it's a requirement of the Highway Nine guidelines.
And the DRB also talked about the roof canopy over the gas pumps being pitched to match the roof of the convenience store building itself, and there's some commentary, and I guess it's staff, I just want to get some confirmation from staff as to whether or not that that would be, I guess, you know, would they be able to do that? There's a comment in the, in the, the staff made, I guess it's staff, talking about that you wouldn't be able to do that because of the configuration of the building, of the roof itself over the gas pumps?
Well, in this particular case, there was a point at which it was probably much more difficult, in that it had an oddly shaped, when it had five pumps, it had kind of an odd angle to it, because it made more of a triangular canopy. With this new shape, you can do that.
Okay, so then that's a moot point from the December 2nd. And I guess just as commentary from this point on, as I look over the public justification report, and I look over the DRB's report, and I look at a lot of the comments that have been made over, over time of this application, and I look at the fact that, you know, it all comes back to intensity of use. And I know, and, 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 and I guess the, along with the intensity of use, would also come the noise, everything that would come with the gas station. And there are some conditions that have been recommended by staff to do, to take care of some of those, such as, you know, all canopy lighting being recessed, no outside speakers intercom permitted on the premises, et cetera. I would really like for this board to consider further conditions limiting hours of operation, and look specifically at deliveries of gas, when that should be, limiting hours of dumpster pickup, when that should be. All that goes to, you know, to limiting the intensity of use, especially at hours that are, you know, nightly hours where families would be trying to sleep this close to this And I jotted some things down. For instance, the applicant is asking for hours of operation, or his anticipated hours of operation, I believe, are 5:30 a.m. to midnight, Monday through, Monday, yeah, and then Monday through, Monday through Saturday, and then 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Sundays. And unless I'm mistaken, the businesses around there don't even, they all close at 10:00. Like the Publix and all of that across the street close at 10:00. They may open at 6:00. I don't think they open at 5:30. That goes to intensity of use, so I would recommend that we consider limiting the hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. each day, Monday through Sunday. Limiting gas deliveries to hours of non-operation, which I guess would be 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. I don't think there's a lot of noise associated with gas deliveries, but in terms of possible queuing issues from Highway Nine and Bethany Bend, and just the logistics of getting that truck through that development when cars are there, I think it would be best to limit the deliveries of gas at night. From a noise issue, I think we should limit the hours of dumpster pickup to nine to five, as well as limiting the sizes, the size of gas delivery and other delivery vehicles to 33 feet or less. I also think we should condition the roof canopy over the gas pumps to be pitched. I think that would go well with the building itself, the convenience store itself. And I also would like there to be a discussion regarding the maintenance of the underground detention facility, in terms of what kind of maintenance we should, we should need for that. I base these recommendations on a call that I had with Fulton County today. I know there's a lot of discussion that's been regarding what Fulton County's historical public policy has been with regard to gas stations, and, and service stations, and convenience stores, and that kind of thing. And I had heard at one point that there was some contradictory information presented by Nancy Leathers and, and Randy Beck. So I had a call with Randy Beck, and I wanted to get from him what the, the historical public policy was with regard to Fulton County along that, along this corridor, and specifically with gas stations in close proximity to residential. And I learned a lot from that, and, and I learned that the gas stations and convenience stores do fall under retail shop use designations, and that they would just consider standard exclusions, standard buffers, standard setbacks for that. But as opposed to service station with bays, they consider that more intense use, and they would actually require C2 zoning for that. And we had a discussion regarding what kinds of things would be good, as far as conditions, to limit the intensity and address some of the Publix's concerns with the intensity of use of that. And that's why I recommend those things for us to discuss and possibly include as recommended conditions.
Can we get the applicants, especially those hours? Because I mean, I'll be honest with you, seven o'clock to me seems kind of late in the morning to be getting gas, but I used to have to get on 400, well, before seven, so...
Yeah, I'd be glad to, you know, and it's okay with you, Councilmember Tart, and, you know, to get some input on some of those suggestions that were made.
Thank you, Mayor. Mary Janet Carr, 4180 Harris Trail, Atlanta, Georgia. These are restrictions that we absolutely cannot make. The convenience store and gas station, if you open at seven o'clock, we're going to miss the morning rush hour. And we can, if we don't have any business after 10:00 or after 11:00, we're certainly not going to be open just for the sake of being open. I believe closing it at 10:00 is going to limit our business, so I think I, I agreed last time that we close at 11:00, but that's...
I think I had asked that, and I think you did, I see you today.
Would six to 11 work? Well, the 5:30 is awfully early. Would six to 11 work?
Six to 11, we can make it.
I just want to make one question, too, and then, on the comment about the gas deliveries and the noise, I would almost think, in my opinion, you wouldn't want, the neighbors wouldn't want gas deliveries after hours or in the middle of the night, because of the big semi trucks make a lot of noise, you know, idling or whatever, so that, just be my suggestion, so...
I just remain concerned about traffic issues and the effect that this, you know, and this is something that, you know, we, we really can't, you know, as I discuss this with Mr., with Mr. Lucas, you know, we really can't even contemplate in this, in this paper, what the effects are going to be. When you take a gas truck and put it right there where that green truck is during hours of operation, you really can't even contemplate, and none of these programs even look at, what it's going to be as far as queuing on Highway Nine and/or queuing on Bethany Bend.
Can I ask a question on operations on that? My opinion is if you had a truck, just like it's on the screen, and it's blocking there, that, I know most people, including myself, if I drive by a gas station and cars are lined up, I'm going down the road or whatever, you know, and, I don't know if Mr. Rappel or somebody, you know, were, but is that, you know, or even Mr. Lucas, you know, is that a concern, or is that, you know, the way I'm looking at it, that's just going to affect his business, and there's not going to let other cars get in there, and they're going to drive, you know, drive somewhere else and come back later. But am I correct, or any professional thought on that?
If I may, the, the truck delivery only takes 20 minutes. I have, already have a existing gas station that is exactly designed like that, and it's been in operation since 1996, and we never had any problem with it. The gas truck comes in, it takes average 20 to 30 minutes, maximum 30 minutes. As, as you said, if people come in, if they, if it's blocked, they go, they go somewhere else, and we never had any, any problem with it. And as far as the size of the truck goes, if you go with a smaller truck, we're going to have more frequent delivery, which is actually going to cost more, and if you are worried about traffic, we're going to increase the traffic.
And I would think it would be in your best interest to try to not have the trucks delivering the gas in the morning rush hour and then the afternoon rush hour. So we would try as much as possible to schedule it so that it's the middle of the day when things maybe aren't quietest.
Right. What usually happens is, they usually come in between after morning, morning rush hour is gone, because it would be safer for the truck to come in other than rush hour.
What kind of direction or input do you, do you have is when you try to set your fuel deliveries up? Can you pinpoint those when you basically want them for the most part? Is there flexibility with that, or are they going to come on Tuesday if that's when you, you know, you ordered on Friday for Tuesday? How does that, how does that work?
We usually order the day before, and they can come in. We have a little bit of flexibility, but we cannot tell them exactly when to come. They know themselves not to come during rush hour.
Do the fuel, the jobbers offer coming in and doing key drops at night? Are they during business hours typically?
They do business hour typically.
Any other questions while the applicant's standing? Okay. Alan?
Well, I remain concerned with the intensity of use, and I'm willing to consider supporting the application if there are some concessions that are made, but, I mean, if we're still talking six to 11, that means the lights won't even be turned off until midnight, at They'll be turned on at 5:00 in the morning. I'm more concerned with night than I am the morning. You know, I mean, could there be, could there be some, I mean, I guess, no, six to 11 is what you've agreed to do. I understand the deliveries of gas. I, I see what you're saying with you will need to do more deliveries of gas if you have smaller trucks, however, I can't, and I, you know, I value the statement of the other gentleman, but I can't, I can't in good faith approve something where I see trucks going up on curves. I just can't do that. I mean, it may be in real life, the guy's better than the computer, but I just don't see that happening. I mean, it just goes to speak to, this, this parcel seems way too, this, this, I guess this gas station is way too intense for this parcel. But again, I'd be willing to support it if there were some concessions that were made. But it doesn't seem like you're willing to make any.
If I may, as far as the light goes, as soon as we close, we turn off the light. If you close at 11:00, we turn off the light at 11:00, because there is no reason for us to keep them on. If we keep them on, people think that we are open, and they keep coming in. So the very first thing we do is we turn off the light at 11:00, and when we come in to open at 6:00 or 5:00, 5:00, that's when we turn them on. We won't turn them on before we open the store.
When are dumpsters, when do you plan to have the dumpsters?
The dumpster, unfortunately, is not up to us. It's up to waste management system, or whoever is serving this area. They usually, again, they usually come in after the morning rush hour is gone. So they usually come in between, I would say, 9:00 to 12:00, and then if they come in in the afternoon, it's going to be before the rush hour.
What are our hours for, that we allow dumpsters to be?
I was going to bring that up, if it wasn't brought up, is, we'd have to go back and look at our noise ordinance, because there's certain hours that are prohibited to collect trash, and those are the overnight hours. I believe it can't happen before 7:00 in the morning, it's been a little while since I've read it, and I want to say it can't happen after 9:00 or 10:00.
Matt's itching to tell us back there.
Matt knows.
Matt's the dumpster guy.
It's actually in the solid waste ordinance that regulates permit to pick up garbage. I believe it's 7:30, 7:30.
There you go.
Okay.
Expert.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay.
I would like, whenever a motion is made, I would like to see the hours be limited to 6:00 a.m. to 11:00, which is what they've agreed to. I would like to see that the condition three C be changed, so it says all land strip strips be approved by the city arborist. I would like for three I to add, to provide two benches and two trash receptacles per approval of the community development director, and then the other change that Lynn has already requested on four A, four B.
I've got some more.
All right.
Very good. I'm sorry, what you were through. Alan brought up a couple other things that perhaps the applicant might could, could bring up. One of them was the pitch roof on the canopies. Is that something that, with the elimination of the fifth pump, that, that looks like that can be done? And also, back to the hours, would you be willing to look at Sunday doing like a 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. hours on Sunday?
As far as the pitch roof goes, as...
Gable roof?
Instead of a canopy having pitched, we can, I cannot promise you guys, but I can have the canopy guy to take a look at it, to see if he can make a pitch roof. If it is possible, I don't, I can agree to do that.
Okay.
And as far as the hours of operation go, we can agree to seven, on Sunday, to open at seven, if you allow me to keep it open till 11:00. And if you would, please keep in mind that if you don't have any business, if you don't have any, any cars coming in, there is, it doesn't make any economic sense for me to keep it open.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Intensity of use is the concern, is the issue. It's the issue that we've heard from relative to hundreds of citizens. Obviously, this case has been before us before, and it has remained before us in some form or fashion. I'd be remiss if I didn't address the fact that citizens have continued to indicate that intensity of use is an issue under partials, only 1.8 acres, and I do appreciate the fact that the applicant to date has made some modifications. I'm also mindful that we've got a couple of alternatives. Some of those alternatives, of course, include what we've been discussing here over the last 10 minutes or so, and that is additional conditions. The other approach and the other option, our city attorney has spoken to before, and I'd like you just for a matter of record, if you could just speak to the other approach in addition to accepting the conditions with these few modifications, that the other approach is also to, of course, rezone this as C1, to address that issue of the split zoning between a portion of AG1 and a portion C1, but to be able to split, or to be able to rezone that as C1, but with conditional approval, that would allow for prohibitions of certain uses that are considered by council and by citizens, et cetera, as reasonable prohibitions, as would be legally defined by other zonings that have been before this body, that are effectively the standard prohibitions that we've seen put in place on other zonings along Highway Nine in this particular area. So could you just speak to that in terms of the breadth of opportunity that we have here this evening, that it's, that we do have some variation and variability in what we can and cannot do?
Yes, I will, and I think, I don't want to put too fine a point on it, but I think what you're suggesting is, is to zone the property to a commercial designation, but conditioning with respect to ways to have gas stations, such that the gas station cannot be placed in the property. Is that, is that fair?
I mean, that would be one option, but not, of course, the only, because there's other, the standard prohibitions that have been in place along Highway Nine as a matter of case law, and has been before this board, and as a matter of record, has a... of case law, and has been before this board, and as a matter of record, has a, their standard language, it was put in place on the Coles, on the Simler, on the Ken Morton case. So if you could just speak to that.
Right. I mean, the reality is, when this matter was brought back via remand to this council, it was done fairly much on straight remand, no instructions. In other words, once you all do the rescission, there is no limitation as to what you could do with it, nor is the applicant restrained by any impediment either. And so therefore, you have all options that are available to you, just as you did the first time that it came before you. And there's always an option to take an application, and if you don't want to provide quite the intensity of use that the applicant has asked for, you can provide something less than that. In this case, we have discussed that possibility. I hate to go too far down into things that we might have discussed for purposes of litigation and the defense. I won't litigation, but I will say that in the context of just general zoning discussion, you have the ability to zone it to something that is much more defensible, quite frankly, than the denial was outright, which obviously left the split of the agricultural and commercial, which I don't think anyone was happy with. The council wasn't, and nor was the applicant, obviously, because they sued us with respect to their constitutional right to, to do that. If you were to zone it to a commercial property, that gives us a much more defensible position. Now, as we have said previously, and I don't wanna speak for the applicant, they've got great counsel and certainly know what they're doing. But I think we've also talked about the fact that, that if we were to zone it commercial with some of those standard prohibitions, it may very well be the case that the litigation would be ongoing. And I, we would have to work that out with Mr. Hendricks and Mr. Diller procedurally, but I think the city would be in a much better position than it is now. So I don't want to lead you down the path of thinking that that's not the case. It is the case. But I also believe that we would still be crossways with this applicant as well.
And I understand that, and I appreciate that recap. The other thing I would ask, and I believe that there was some commentary to us previously, with regards to our ability as a council in making land use decisions, that there is nothing that requires us to accept a particular use. If we believe that in the best interest of our citizens, in the best interest of transition policies, in the best interest of planning, in the best interest of required buffers, in the best interests of public health, safety, and welfare, and if in the best interest of establishing policies for areas that include a mixed use whereby you would have a higher intensity use with immediate proximity to residences, that we have full latitude to determine according to our own policies what is appropriate and not appropriate. If you could just speak to that legally, please.
Well, that's right. I mean, the, the reality is, is that zoning is legislation. So this, this council is crafting legislation pursuant to the policies that you have with respect to land use, with respect to policies that are embodied and memorialized in your zoning codes. And within those confines, you are attempting to divine the best legislative policy for this parcel. That's it, in a nutshell. And so, as we discussed, I believe, on the first case this evening, you are limited. I don't want this council to go out and think about things that aren't at all memorialized, and think about considerations that, that your policies don't contemplate. But within the context of what your policies contemplate, you have quite a bit of discretion. And, and so you, you are, of course, you know, within the confines of, of the legislative delegation of authority that's given to you, able to make the decision you think is best for the city of Milton. And that's, can sometimes be terribly challenging. I know it has been in this one as well. But yes, you have quite a bit of, of latitude.
Also, on that same line of thought, with regards to viability of C1 uses, I know that one of the residences who has noted being and having the greatest proximity, there was extensive discussion the last time that these citizens were here. And as a matter of record, those, that laundry list of viable uses was not reread into the record. And I think just as a matter of course, it would be important for us to, either from staff and/or from the residences, because this is a separate case now, because it was, it came back to us, it was rescinded. I think it's important to state that for the record, it would be important to note what are the viable C1 uses within our C1 code. And so either staff, or we could ask, obviously, those that are concerned about this case, if somebody could read into the record the laundry list of C1 uses that are allowable under our zoning code, I'd appreciate that.
Lynn, I don't have that.
I believe, Robin, do you have that?
And I would, if, if you don't mind, I would just say that those are allowable uses, not, maybe or maybe not viable uses.
Yeah, I would specify that, because there's two different things.
Again, separate question, separate point. In terms of viability under C1, I do appreciate the comment. But because this is the case that it is, I think as a matter of record, it's important to have on the record what the array of C1 uses that are allowable under C1 designation.
We do have a staff prepared document. I'd rather that one be written into the record than any.
Sure. Just a matter of...
Somebody else. We might need just two minutes to go.
Okay, yeah, while we're waiting on that, is there any other?
Just go print it off if, if you don't, if you don't mind. We'll, we'll go do that.
Is there anybody else? I think everyone just had a chance that wanted to ask a question or talk. Is there anything else?
Want to get a two-minute caffeine break?
Nope.
Nope? Okay.
I'm gonna stand.
He knows us too well. He knows a two-minute caffeine break, so it would have been a 10-minute break.
Get a two-minute caffeine break.
Would you be willing to bring water? Water, water would be wonderful.
Anyone else need water?
Terrific.
Can I have a hand, just you for reciting?
Come on, pitch him.
Thank you. We lose our voices, too.
While we're waiting, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Tarte had a question about stormwater management.
About what?
Stormwater management.
Mm-hmm.
Stormwater management facilities will be required to be designed to the stormwater design guidelines that we have. Part of that requirement is filing a stormwater maintenance agreement. And in that agreement, it outlines the frequency and types of maintenance activities that will occur on the site, and that's gonna be based on the type of facility that's selected. So depending on what they use will dictate what they need to do to it. And so, from, from that point forward, they would be obligated to that maintenance schedule and types of maintenance under the ordinance and be enforced under that ordinance.
And that's the owner's responsibility as far as that maintenance costs and everything, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Maybe further to that point, how closely are we monitoring these maintenance schedules?
Well, to my knowledge, we haven't done any since I've been here. We've not, not done any new ones. So we're required to monitor 20% of the facilities, both commercial and residential, from our NDS program. So this is the first year that we've, or second year that we've done that.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the typical lifespan of, of an approved system be 40, 50 years?
Well, it would depend on the type of facility that's selected. Usually with these underground facilities and, and the fueling station, you're probably gonna see some type of sand filter used in that. And, you know, that sand filter is kind of a high maintenance deal. And depending on how much runoff you have on the site, you know, it could require maintenance every few months.
I was thinking more of the structure itself, underground.
That's right. Yeah, that, that is 40, 50 years. So generally, these types of facilities are gonna have both a water quality component and a water quantity component. And it's the quality component that generally will require more frequent maintenance.
Does anybody know what the hours of operation are of this gas station? Are they not supposed to change?
I, I think they close sometime between 10 and 11.
We've got an 11 o'clock room officer.
11?
Yeah.
That's what it was, 20 grand.
Just while we're waiting on the, the list of allowable C1 uses, could somebody speak to buffer requirements that would be off-site? In particular, if, if this particular parcel does not have enough space to allow for more adequate buffers, what opportunity do we have to require additional buffers on adjacent land and/or right-of-ways that bump up next to adjacent or nearby residences?
The only property that's not developed that joins this property is already zoned C1. And it, it already has, in fact, I don't think it has very many conditions, but it already has conditions on it.
I guess let me state it differently. Would there be anything that would preclude this body from requiring an applicant to, to better buffer the land of another landowner? In other words, not to only buffer from their parcel, but to add some additional buffering to those nearby residences?
But not, yes, on their property.
Yes.
Off-site, yes.
Okay. Just that's another point that had not been contemplated.
Okay. Well, once we, I'd like for y'all to think about, I've got, had several people on the floor. Basically, basically make a motion, but, you know, with things they'd like to see in one. So with this information, we're waiting on after that, if we could.
I have the information, sir.
You do?
The list of uses that potentially could be designed to fit this site, again, is using the assumption of approximately 2,000 square foot, feet of buildings, and a maximum available parking area of somewhere between 15 and 18 spaces. Those uses under C1, as permitted by right, would be art gallery, clinic, medical, bank with no drive-throughs, spa, laundromat or dry cleaners. I would add potentially no drive-throughs for the dry cleaner as well. Branch library, offices, personal services, barber shop, nail salon, et cetera. Pet grooming with no overnight stay. Photography studio, printing shop, convenience only, that would be similar to a Kinko's. Appliance or similar repair shop, retail, a school of business, dance or music or something similar. A gas station and convenience store, a recycling center, a restaurant limited to 1,000 square feet with no seating. Carryout, delivery or catering limited to 1,000 square feet with no seating.
Okay.
I appreciate that. And that, again, just to reiterate, is the list of C1 uses that would be allowable under a C1 piece of property, if it were so resented.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else, or do I have someone that wants to make a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion. I would put forward a motion, and let me ask this of our city attorney. Because it was a rescission first, followed by the other, is the RZ 10-01 still the appropriate?
Yes.
Reference?
Yes.
I would make a, a motion to approve RZ 10-01 conditional, conditioned to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the subject property as follows, and that being the retail service, commercial and/or office and accessory uses included, as have been enumerated. However, listing the exclusions as have been put forth by this body and the city, as enumerated under, as one example, RZ 07-007 and VC 07-005, which specifically reads that the following uses are excluded. Gas stations and associated gas pumps, freestanding fast food restaurants, commercial amusements including cinemas, liquor stores and package stores, although it says upscale wine stalls are allowed. Restaurants may sell liquor by the drink, motels, hotels, adult-oriented entertainment businesses, including adult bookstores, adult entertainment or adult entertainment establishments, as defined in Article 3.33. Checking, cashing stores, pawn shops, coin-operated laundries, video arcades, pool halls, standalone massage parlors, standalone nail salons, standalone beauty salons, standalone barber shops. I actually would remove that because barber shops would be something that would be allowable. Flea markets, secondhand store plus retail shops, billboards, convenience stores with gas station pumps and fortune tellers. I believe that I have captured that appropriately with one or two exceptions based on the list that you provided. So effectively, my motion would be to approve this parcel for C1, removing the AG1, but to have it with the same exclusions with one or two exceptions that have been put forward as a matter of policy for this area of Highway 9. And the other things that I would include would be with those allowable C1 uses, that there be consideration of appropriate timing, such has been discussed, with no one of those businesses remaining open past 11 o'clock, and of course, meeting our dumpster requirements as being consistent with the other policies.
Okay, do I have a second to Councilmember Bailey's motion?
Did you say service station?
That service stations would be excluded.
Okay. I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. And I will not repeat that motion. It's on the record.
Not on what?
All in, any discussion?
I'm not sure what happened here.
I made a motion to approve the rezoning, C1 conditional, and the condition being that we allow certain C1 uses and that we prohibit others, as is consistent with the decisions that we've made along Highway 9. And specifically enumerated those consistent with the decisions that have been put forward by this body, and as have been sanctioned by other decisions as a matter of record, including the additional commentary about hours of operation.
Mayor, since this is very different from what the applicant has requested, I think we would like to get their opinion on the record for this application, which was excluded.
Basically, this is denying their application. So...
Well, if I may, as a matter of record, it's actually allowing, we, we have, we had a rescission. We're hearing the new case. What was originally denied was an application, and it allowed that parcel to remain AG1 and C1. So what this is doing is, as was stated by our city attorney, it's making even more viable a parcel and converting it to full C1 with the exclusions that are standard and customary and based on this area of Highway 9. So yes, it would indeed exclude the use of a gas station, but it would not exclude the laundry list of other C1 possibilities. Again, and I'll just state for the record that that allows a very viable, economically viable alternative. It allows for the meeting of citizen issues, citizen concerns. It addresses the buffer issues. It addresses the intensity of use. And it sets forth legally, and as would be upholdable in a court of law, a whole host of possible commercial uses. It may not meet that particular application, but it absolutely and legally would rezone that property to C1 with a variety of uses that would be acceptable, that would represent appropriate transition, that would be less intense than a gas station. And it's, it's an alternative that's quite viable, as was reiterated for the record by the city attorney.
I would like to just state that whether or not a business is viable, I don't feel like we have the, the...
I think it's allowable.
Information in order to, to state whether or not a business is viable.
It's allowable.
That is allowable, not viable.
Okay. Councilmember Tarte, you still, you second that motion?
Yes, I second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe that failed four to three.
Four to three?
Okay.
As a matter of record, it's important to capture.
Okay. I have another motion. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, I believe we, we had a motion that failed. We don't, we don't have another motion.
The deck is cleared again, this matter, still before the, the council for any motion.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
To approve RZ 10-01 with the recommended staff conditions, but also to add, and I think the place to add it is 3I, hours of operation, Monday through Saturday, 6 to 11, Sunday, 7 to 11, as well as in Section 4, 4B, make that be, delete northbound right turn lane on the Highway 9 at Bethany Bend, and to change that to eastbound right turn lane on Bethany Bend at New Access Drive. And also, in Section 1A, to include service station.
And on 3C, can you just change it to say landscape strips?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I had that. Make 3C be provide additional landscaping within the required landscape strips as approved by the city arborist.
It's going to be 3K.
There's a pitch canopy that had been.
I don't know how we can, without an architect here, I agree with what you're saying, is to make it more appealing, and I don't know how to capture that in a condition to make it worth anything. If the city attorney would, could, could, could address that.
Respect to the pitch canopy?
Yes, but I believe Councilman Lusk said it should be better to be a gable, gable roof or something. I, I don't know how to, to capture that to make it worth anything.
Well, what I heard, I believe, the applicant say was that he would discuss it with his architect, and if his architect said it was reasonably feasible, that he would incorporate it, so perhaps you could just make the conditions.
And the only thing I would add to that, just, that sounds good, but if you look at the footprint of it, and if you look at the long, narrow area where the two pumps are, and then you look at the water.
That's a long transition.
That's going to be a really weird transition, so.
I mean, the best I can say is, is if we added a HIJ, 3J, and said to make the, the canopies as aesthetically pleasing as possible, but that, that doesn't, that doesn't mean anything.
Can we make 3J be the two benches and two trash receptacles for approval of the community development director?
I'd be happy to make that. I'd be happy to add the decorative benches and trash receptacles as, as approved by Director of Community Development and Door Public Works.
May I ask the question?
I think we need a second at first.
Yeah, I think, all right, I got a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Lusk, and then Councilmember Bailey has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for staff, as a matter of course, does this, regardless of how this is decided, does this go back to the design review board with regards to things such as building design, dumpster screening, including the canopy?
Each building permit that's requested will have to go back before the design review board for courtesy, for review.
For a courtesy or for?
Not for a courtesy, I'm sorry, I had to correct.
So it might be, just a thought, would be to include that reference to the pitched roof within consideration for the design review board, given that that entity has reviewed this anyway.
Perhaps we could make a, a JK, 3K, that adds that, that the design of the, and I'm just talking out loud here, but the design of the roof canopy, or the roof over the canopies can be in with, with input from design review board. I think that leaves it a little open, but also some input from, from the DRB to try to help soften that look as, as much as possible. I don't know how to capture that and then make it mean anything.
Well, I think right now, we've got, got a motion and a second. I mean, we can always.
It'll have to be done, it'll have to be looked at by them anyway, won't it?
To keep that, you know, to direct DRB, obviously, they're going to look at it, see what they come up with.
Is there a second?
There is.
There is a second.
But wouldn't, I mean, again, this is a matter.
This is discussion, it could be changed.
It could be modified, we do it all the time, and so to, to Councilmember Hewitt's.
I would be happy to add something like that in there if my secondor would, would be willing to do that, to try to help.
What do you want to add, how do you want to?
I don't know what I want to add. 3K is to just have input from the design review board and design to the roof over the gas canopies.
And the only thing I would comment, you can, don't have to change it, but some kind of clause like if, if it's feasible or something, it may be.
I would put, I would include that.
You know, if it costs three times as much or something, it may not be.
If it's feasible.
What hours did you put in there?
Hold on, let's finish this one before we get back to that.
To that point a little bit further, we'd recommend intersecting gable roofs in lieu of a canopy roof there, where the final approval and decision coming through DRB.
What is the gable, what is that?
So.
Oh, okay. So it's got a pitch to it.
I, Councilperson Lusk, if you'll state that real loud, this will be my 3K, if, if the secondor will approve it.
On 3K, council recommends, in lieu of the canopy roof, two intersecting gable roofs with a final recommendation and approval by the design review board.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
No, I would just say it was feasible or something, you know, within, I don't know how you quantify that, but case structurally or something, change the whole design.
Well, roof be compatible or similar to that on the, the building. That is, that is a gable roof, I believe.
I think I think it knows, but I'm going to have to summarize to make sure.
Yeah, we're going to have to summarize it, and also was the.
Going on, I just want to.
I think everything up to now has been talked about with the applicant, the hours and whatnot, but.
And those hours were seven to, excuse me, 6 to 11, Monday through Saturday, 7 to 11 on Sunday.
Okay.
And the only thing that is not was the, the gabled roof, well, it was addressed a little bit, I think the applicant said that they would look into it and talk to their canopy people, but I think what we're here now, we want to include that, that it goes through DRB, and that that's, you know, that's the direction we'd like to go.
Are you all in agreement with that?
Okay, do we want to, I.
Can, can the city manager, we just need to make a record here that.
That's what I was going to say, I want, I want to get Councilmember Hewitt to repeat his motion, and then if Councilmember Thurman wants to second it, then we'll go back and do the second.
Why do you like Chris, did you have your written down?
Yeah.
I had the last one written down that I could discuss tomorrow, so.
And what I mean by that, Councilmember Hewitt's.
Okay.
His, his motion, but let, let city manager read what he interprets that, and then you can agree or not.
Okay, this is what I heard, was the motion to approve RZ 10-01 with the recommended conditions as included by staff in the packet, subject to the following modifications: to add Section 3I, which would indicate operating hours Monday through Saturday, no earlier than 6:00 AM and no later than 11:00 PM, with operating hours on Sunday no earlier than 7:00 and no later than 11:00. To add in Section 4B, 4A, 4B, the removal of that with the substitution eastbound right turn lane on Bethany Bend and New Access Drive. In Section 1A, to add the word service station as an excluded use, to modify landscape strip to landscape strips in 3C, and striking along, along the south property line from that section to add 3J, which would require two benches and two trash receptacles to be placed on site, and to add 3K with the statement council recommends two intersecting gabled roofs over the gas canopy, if approved with input from the design review board, and if otherwise economically feasible.
I would agree with that.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Lusk. Need discussion?
I have a question, Mayor.
Okay, do you want?
And hearing the recap, what I didn't hear was a capture of earlier discussion, I think it was Councilmember Tarte and possibly others that talked about conditioning the size of truck, given the fact that the renditions that we have showed some of these size vehicles going in and over the curb. So just if you guys are recapping, obviously, it's your motion, and it'll pass or it won't, but it seems to me that, I recall that there had been discussion about limiting the size of truck with regard to delivering, I think it's at least worthy of.
I thought we decided that if we limited the size of the truck, then the truck could come have to deliver more.
That was a comment.
My thoughts was this.
I just, I didn't hear a conclusion to that, and.
And I think our dumpster hours were, were captured by our solid waste ordinance, so we don't need to address that.
Okay. You know, I, I would just want to make a final comment, I know, you know, I'd support this motion, I know there are people in this room that don't agree with it, and I, you know, I certainly understand, I certainly understand people that affected live near it, but from day one, I've talked to legal or staff, I've talked to every citizen that has, has reached out to my, to me, I've talked to the applicant, and just could not get a definite, concrete answer on a legal reason to deny this. So, again, I'm, I'm not making excuses, but I just want to tell everybody in the audience, I certainly understand, and, and I think some of you that I've met with could even say, I've reached out to look for, for every, every reasoning that there is, and to my, you know, in my mind, I can't, can't grasp that, so I'll leave that at that. But if there's no other questions or comments, I'll, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, opposed, please say.
Aye.
Okay, I believe that's four to three, approved. Yes, thank, thank both sides for the time. Okay, if we can move on to unfinished business.
With unfinished business, we have approval of an ordinance establishing solid waste collection services within the city of Milton, providing for the scope and nature of the operation, providing for the disposal of garbage, solid waste and refuse, requiring the execution by service providers of a non-exclusive agreement with the city of Milton, providing procedures for the handling of complaints, providing for infrastructure maintenance fee, requiring indemnity insurance, providing for revocation and amendment, prohibiting assignment and subletting without consent, providing forfeiture and for making other provisions. This is Agenda Item 10, 1278, first presentation on November 1st, 2010, Matt Marietta.
Good evening. This simply represents the annual reaffirmation of the solid waste ordinance. If this passes tonight, then I'll subsequently go through and follow up with all the garbage companies, and like I did last year, and ensure that they are in compliance and going to remain in compliance, issue new copies of the ordinance, and, and continue to hopefully regulate the system and improve how, how we provide that service to our citizens.
Okay, open up to questions?
Any changes from prior years ordinance?
No.
Any recommendations for change relative to prior?
That might be a subject that's.
Yeah, be careful, be careful.
More appropriate for a, for a session.
Well, but, but I am interested, I think that the good news, and I'll just say that I think it's been positive that we actually have ordinance that now somebody's giving some perspective to. It's one thing, we approve things all the time, and a lot of times, we don't necessarily uphold the things that we put in place, and let me just say, it's refreshing to have something in place that people are actually reviewing and upholding, and I mean that with all sincerity, so thank you. So I, I ask it very sincerely when I say, do you have recommendations? I know that we had a committee that spent a lot of time, so I think any recommendations that you would bring forward, I'd like us to run back by some of those folks that are still Milton residents. I surely wouldn't want to undo their work, hopefully, those would be enhancements that you would recommend. In particular, and I'll just say as a matter of record, it's been a long night, so we can talk about it later, but as it relates to recycling, I'd surely like to see us pursue, and I've asked this question probably a couple of months ago, and I know we've all been busy, but I'd like us not to lose the thought, is that we do have the opportunity to pursue a possible recycling agreement with the potential provider just beyond our borders in Forsyth County, and I've asked about it, I'm hoping that we now can perhaps follow up on that. I think it's one of those things that ties to this ordinance, and as a matter of record, I support that, and I think that we need to pursue that, as opposed to just looking at other jurisdictions where we're going to expend a lot of dollars. I think we've now got somebody who's close to our borders whereby we can provide some service to citizens at a reduced cost, and perhaps at no cost. So, anyway, as a subset, I hope we can pursue that, thank you, and that's it.
Okay, are there any other questions for Matt?
I'll make a motion, no, we have no further questions.
Make a motion, I'll second.
Okay. Mayor, I'd like to make a, a motion that we approve, Agenda Item Number 10-1278, approval of an ordinance establishing solid waste collection services within the city of Milton, providing for the scope and nature of the operation, providing for the disposal of garbage, solid waste and refuse, requiring the execution by service providers of a non-exclusive agreement with the city of Milton, providing procedures for the handling of complaints, providing for an infrastructure maintenance fee, requiring indemnity insurance, providing for revocation and amendment, prohibiting assignment and subletting without consent, providing for forfeiture and for making other provisions.
Second motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilwoman Thurman, second by Councilmember Lusk. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous? See if council, does council have anything that they want to discuss?
I think we should stay here at least another hour.
Okay, does staff have any?
Yes, by law, by law, we have to only stay 30 minutes.
And y'all are going to look at me when I say one thing. We will need to plan. We're going to hold off then, what we could have done in executive session on tonight, we'll take that in December on the 6th.
You are a wise man.
Yeah, I, I know. I just wanted to. Say, say one thing related to the, the first zoning case we had, I didn't interject at, at the time of the case was being heard, I just want to follow up on, on some of the questions as to whether or not there was a communication launch between our committees and the actual zoning process, partly because I think staff did the right thing with respect to that particular zoning case. We have various straightforward procedures we have to follow in the Zoning Procedures Act, and a step in that process does not include any of our committees, it includes the ones that are required by the Zoning Procedures Act. We told very early on in that process, representation from the Milton Disability and Wast Committee as to how the appropriate way for them was to engage in the zoning process, and that was to provide both comment and public input from their board at both the planning commission meeting, as well as at the council table. So we did engage our local committee that had interest in that particular area of the world, but as, as just as a matter of practice, it was not, it was not under the advice of, of our, our good legal team nor of our staff to say, let's interject an extra step in the zoning process. So I heard a couple of times that, that we missed an opportunity to communicate, and I just want to let you know what really happened with respect to that, is that we did communicate, we communicated early on, and we provided them with the mechanism by which that they should engage in a zoning process. If you have any questions, I'll answer those, but I just didn't want you to think that we purposely omitted somebody or didn't try to communicate with one of the committees in the city.
And I know, I can confirm that too, so.
Yeah, well, and Chris, I wasn't trying to suggest that we change our process in any way, shape or form. I was trying to suggest that, because the way I heard it from members of MDAC is that they had no idea that this was going on, and obviously, that we've been working on this since July. So, so I, and we don't need to get in the nuts and bolts of that, I certainly trust that the staff always does and follows the procedures that are laid out for them, and I wouldn't second guess that in any way.
And I didn't think you did, I just wanted to make sure I closed that move. To, to, to let you know, it was a good learning experience for some people on that committee, I can tell you as well. I mean, they, they thought that when, initially, there was some thought that once an application was made, that we might come to a consideration of it, or a present, a presentation of it, you know, a year and a half from now. But after it finally worked its way through, there might be a full year between when the application was made and when we took action. So we were able to use it as a, as kind of a good learning tool as to how that portion of the city operates, so. With the fear of keeping y'all here any longer tonight, I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions or give you any updates on anything you might want, but I'm always available at my phone.
Just have a quick response to that, one, thank you for that clarification, but as you're speaking, what strikes me as an opportunity is that within our community participation plan, which is a part of our zoning process, it may just be that we all can creatively think, when we have something that comes forward, we can, we always have the opportunity to make suggestions to applicants as to not who they should inclusively include, but that if we've got some ideas, if we know that we've got a committee that they could reach out to, not that as a requirement of zoning, because you're exactly right, but maybe it's a good educational opportunity for us as a staff and as a council, is that when we know that there's going to be people that are passionate about an issue, is that maybe we just become a bit more proactive, and that's not a criticism, I think, to your point, it's an opportunity, and I think as Councilmember Longoria said, it's an opportunity. And so if, if somehow, we had folks that are passionate about issues that were impacted, maybe from that perspective was a missed opportunity to share with the applicant a suggestion that they reach out, not as a requirement, but, but hopefully, we can all think a little bit more broadly. And then the other was just to say, I think it's a positive that that applicant has. And then the other was just to say, I think it's a positive, that that applicant has indicated that they are willing to reach out and create, with staff's help, a state board committee. I think that there's a win in, in that sort of assistance with communication.
Okay, do I have a motion or we adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I move, we adjourn the regular council meeting.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You're done with saying what you were going to say, right, Chris?
I'm done.